This is our regular board meeting of, what are we, June 10th, 2019. See, we have just come back from our closed session. We do have a couple matters to report out. On motion of Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Jannelli, the Board voted in closed session to expel Student #2018-19-11 from the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote. Ayes from Member Jannelli, McLaughlin, Seguenza, and Fuller. No from Member Wright. On motion of Member McLaughlin, seconded by Member Wright, the Board voted in closed session to readmit Student #2018-19-01 to the Martinez Unified School District by the following vote. Five in favor, no abstentions, and no in opposition. And finally, on Motion of Member Wright, seconded by Member McLaughlin, the Board voted in closed session to readmit Student #2018-19-09 to the Martinez Unified School District by the following votes. All in favor. No abstentions. And that's all we have to report out tonight. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that this meeting is recorded. It is also being broadcast, both audio and visually. So if you do need a device, we do have devices to assist with Spanish translation. And if you are here on a particular agenda item, including public comments, please fill out a comment card in the back. And there is a basket at the end of the table to put it in. And we will call the speakers as the items come available. Tonight, we are, let's see. Todd Navarro, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, moving on to item number eight. Do we have any change? Oh, this is for the approval of... Did we already do the approval of agenda? I missed it. Okay, number seven. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes.
Good, and we'll move on to number eight, which is Approval of the Minutes. We have two sets, actually, three sets of minutes. And they are for the meetings of May 6th, May 20th, and our special meeting of May 31st. Are there any Board comments or questions on any of those minutes? All right, any other questions? We're gonna have to bring it back just if I'm looking at it. Any other questions? Any other, any public comments? Seeing none, let's bring it back to the Board. If we can maybe break them up, we'll do May 6th and then May 30th separately. And we will bring back the minutes for May 20th at a different time. Is that what we'd like to do? All right, do we have a motion?
Second.
Student votes?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
With regard to special meeting, May 31st?
Second.
This one is not for... Oh, like, there's no student vote on this particular one. Yeah, right. So, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions from Member Wright and Member McLaughlin. All right, number nine are comments from Student Representative. That team, this is yours?
There are no school reports for June 10th, 2019.
Wow, there's quite a bit, quite a bit going on.
So we did have the graduations from the high school, the middle school, and Breonis Vicente as well. And I know the teachers, let's just take a moment to thank all the teachers and staff because I know the last week, and the last few weeks are just crazy mayhem happening at school. So thank you for everyone and for getting the grades in.
Great, thank you. And we look forward to reconvening your reports coming back this fall. Next is item number 10, which is Employee Organization Reports. Do we have any reports today? All right, moving on to comments from the PTA, line number 11. Any PTA reports? Todd, come on up.
Good evening. Just as the school year wrapped up and we're taking into consideration some items later on in the agenda around potential budget considerations for the upcoming years, the PTAs got together and thought it would be a nice idea if we shared financially how we've contributed across the school district. Unfortunately, we are still wrapping up our books from this year. So these are last year's numbers, and we expect them to equal or be greater than what was contributed across the school district this year. So for the 2017-2018 school year, income across the six PTAs was over $400,000. And we like, and we contributed back approximately $406,000. Not taken into consideration are balances that are still sitting in some of those funds so that we can take into special, any special considerations that may come into play at some point. The other thing that we've talked about as, in our variety of PTA groups is inviting Board members to consider coming to association meetings, possibly for the schools that are within your, your boundaries or even outside of that. It's a good opportunity to connect with our parents and our staffs that join us as well as possibly address in forums other than board meetings any concerns that might be on the mind of our parents and possibly even our students. Thank you, have a good summer.
Thank you. Real quick, when do you have your, your full Board meetings? Or some, some of them are actually on this Monday, aren't they? Great, okay, so something we can definitely make work. Thank you, and thank you for sharing your financials. I welcome you to do it yearly or even more often. That's fantastic. Number 12 is Staff Board Acknowledgements, Announcements, and Reports. This is, we have one report tonight, 12.1, which is Martinez Junior High School: Planning for Success, presented by CJ Kimmich.
Thank you very much. David, if you can pull that presentation up. We'll get started on it. I wanted to first begin by thanking the community members that have provided me input through conversation and collaboration, the staff members at Martinez Junior High School, both certificated and classified, as well as the students. I've spent a great deal amount of time at Martinez Junior High School the last two months and have gotten to know the school that I used to work at very well once again. And so we're gonna be giving a presentation tonight regarding our plans for success in 1920. Before we start, also acknowledging that I think we all recognize members of our Board, our staff, our audience, that when we are working to address concerns at a school site and any of that is related to student climate or student conduct, that one single thing, one single program, one single approach is generally not going to be what identi, what creates the single base solution, that it's going to be a very nuanced approach. There's gonna be a number of different things that have to be adjusted, both at the macro and micro level of the school site. So as we do this, one of the things I wanted to highlight is the foundation for collaboration that we set with this. And as I've talked about, we met with MEA, CSEA, the MJHS staff as a whole, parents both as groups and individuals, had meetings with students and discussions with students on an individual basis. I met with the junior high school leadership and administration. Also met with our new principal, Ms. Cusack, one-to-one regarding her thoughts and plans for next year. And in addition to the meetings that I've held, Ms. Cusack has engaged in meetings onsite with individual and small groups of staff, talking with students on campus and talking with parents in the community. In addition, we will be building on some of the positive changes that have already been moving forward through this spring. The three key areas of focus are character development, system development, and parent development. And as we talk about those things, we'll start with character development. And you'll see on a few of these slides that we've highlighted kind of a sixth grade focus. Some of the things that we'll be highlighting as we come back into August is a specific training on the Say Something Program for our incoming sixth graders. As our staff, Board, and community members will likely understand when we launched the Say Something Program in February, we trained current sixth through 12th graders across the district. So our incoming, our fifth graders who are incoming sixth graders will need to be directly trained in how to use the program, the benefits of the program. In addition, we've talked in this boardroom already around the web program. And the junior high school has already identified 70 student leaders in the eighth grade preparing to serve as peer mentors and be a part of this web program for the incoming sixth graders. I think that's gonna be one of the things that has a profound impact on the culture and climate of the school site is when we enlist the students who make up the school site to serve as mentors and leaders. Peer correction is oftentimes the strongest element of changing the dynamics in a student culture and climate. In addition, we're exploring PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We're talking with the county office right now about a partnership to bring some training to the county with our district and trying to get some other districts as well to make it more cost efficient. The county is interested in exploring this with us. If the county ends up not engaging in this process with us, we're still going to continue down this road. Elements of PBIS have been at Martinez Junior High School under prior administration, not in the last few years. But we have seen positive results from it in, in earlier circumstances. And the premise behind PBIS is a few things which we'll talk about a little bit later. But one of the things to highlight now is that does line up very well with our work around MTSS. And the other part of it that works out very well is it highlights not just positive behavior because we will continue neither positive behavior and negative behavior, and neither one of them happens in a vacuum. But the benefit to positive behavior is that when we phrase the things that we want to see the kids doing well, we're phrasing that in a positive approach. And we're recognizing and rewarding the students who are meeting those expectations. It doesn't mean that we ignore negative behavior and that there aren't associated consequences or interventions. But it does help expressly identify for the staff and the students in the community what it is that we want to see as acceptable and appropriate behavior. Another aspect that we've been talking with the Martinez Police Department about is a continued increase in cyber safety and digital citizenship. In the past few years, we've had different forms and formal and informal presentations from outside agencies. Internally, we've talked about it. But one of the things that we're looking at for next year is an additional aspect and more elements of this because while we have provided some things in the past, there's evidence to show us that we need to be doing more because the behavior still exists for our students, that this is something we certainly need to continue addressing. So we have talked with the Martinez Police Department about workshops for the students and for our parents related to cyber safety and digital citizenship. And we're also looking at different aspects of common sense media as a way to help our students engage in proactive discussion about the importance of cyber safety and digital citizenship. When we talk about PBIS, this is just a short graphic. We're not gonna do an entire presentation on it. But it does help to highlight the intended outcomes. You can see the language there, academic and behavior targets endorsed and emphasized by students, families, and educators. And I won't read them all to you because I recognize that you have that capacity on your own. But if you look at the visual on the top, you will see that there are four elements that we're really looking at. Supporting student behavior, supporting decision making. And one of the key elements of PBIS is database decision making around the behaviors that we see. The third aspect being the social competence and academic achievement. And the fourth being supporting staff behavior. Another important element of PBIS, again, I won't read this entire slide to you, but if you see the writing in the middle of the slide, it supports the core features of MTSS. And you know that we have talked about multi-tiered systems of support within this boardroom throughout the course of this year. We have schools within the district that are implementing different programs around social and emotional learning related to MTSS. And it is going to be a part of the LCAP, which Mr. Doppy and Ms. Rossi will be speaking about later tonight. So implementing a program like PBIS helps to identify the tiers of interventions. As you see, that there are interventions designed for the 80% to 90% of your students, the 5% to 10%, and then the smallest percentage having the most intensive interventions as well. When we talk about systems development, when we plan for success in 2019-20, again, a highlight here on the focus for sixth grade. And this isn't that sixth grade is necessarily a problem grade. But having talked with past administrators, also looking back on my own experience at Martinez Junior High School and talking directly with staff members at Martinez Junior High School, there's a number of things that they felt were helpful in how we brought the sixth graders into the campus. And that helped create a first positive year of culture and climate experience. One of the areas that we're looking at is looking at the A-Building staffing and assignments. In prior years, we were able to really maximize the number of classes that happened for sixth graders within the A-Building and seeing if we can't create the strongest set of structure for our sixth grade students transitioning from the elementary school into the middle school. Other systems that we're looking at increasing and improving, our monthly leadership teams, the school administration and a school-based leadership team, as well as a separate counseling team, offering a chance to monitor and implement new programs and changes to determine the fidelity, success, and areas of need. What that might look like in practicality is the principal and assistant principals meeting with the leadership team from MEA, a leadership team from CSEA, having monthly check-ins and conversation about things that are working, areas of need, things that are improving. And then also administration meeting regularly with counselors to see where are some of our students that are, we're identifying early that may need intervention and support services, our more intensive student population that might need a more structured intervention or a more intensive support. The other aspect of monthly leadership team meetings, district administration and school administration. So members of my cabinet team at the district level meeting directly with the site administration on a regular monthly basis to analyze student discipline data, trends regarding academic performance. Where are we seeing things that are areas of need? And then the third key topic here for systems development is an increased structure of Martinez Police Department, Martinez Police Department Partnership. I met with the chief today and one of the sergeants to engage in exploring a model for monthly meeting structures with the police department with a focus on all of our schools, all of our programs, all of our students. And the intention is to formalize the existing collaboration that we have with the police department already and also set forward some parameters where we can engage in more structured and regular discussion about how to support members of our student population and support aspects of our different schools across the district. Other systems development, well, some of them are continuing. For example, this spring, we've heard from staff members about a positive influence from this. We have created and we will continue lunch and after-school detention programs, recognizing that that is not the solution for everything, but that it has provided some effective behavior correction for some students. We'll monitor for effectiveness through the first semester. And then develop proactive methods to intervene and offer opportunities for behavior correction reflection before suspension and not out of school. That's one of the things that we're gonna continue to look at. Creating more structure for ongoing communication between administration, parents, and students. One of the things that we're looking at here is setting a more structured process for our school leadership in terms of a check-in process for both students and staff and parents. So an example of that would be when we have an incident where a student might be the subject of bullying, either as the victim or the aggressor, or an incident where a student is suspended for a reason. Maybe they have something that they shouldn't have on campus, or they've engaged in any type of behavior that's gonna result in a suspension. We're talking about a contact point first at the time of the event. And then a second contact point with the student and the parent at a re-entry, the time of return. And then looking and making sure that we're also having a periodic check-in as the days continue. So checking in with the student and the family at five days, checking in with the student and the family at 15 days. So that when we do have to place a student out of school for something or there is an incident where we need to be checking on someone who might be the victim of inappropriate behavior of some sort, and we might need to also be following up with a student who made a negative choice, that we have structured things in place where we're going to regularly check in to see how things are progressing. Are they getting better? Of course, this doesn't mean that after 15 days, we could always check in with the student again. But this system will help our administration have a process for engaging in structured check-in points along the way. Nothing to say that they couldn't happen more frequently if needed. And then the other part that we talked about was parent development. And we are presenting this model with a focus on PTA involvement. I think as we just heard from, from Todd Navarro, the PTAs and involvement from a financial standpoint is a very large investment into our students and our schools and our community. And at the same time, what isn't necessarily always captured in that fiscal investment from PTA is that PTA also provides an organized structure on a monthly basis in virtually every campus for parents to come in and have a structure in which they can engage with the school leadership in conversation. In addition, PTA also has structured positions and offices that already exist, which can certainly be supported and expanded, which help organize parent involvement, parent volunteers, and highlighting both in-school and after-school programs. PTA is able to provide in-school activities, which might provide a positive interaction for students and connect students in a better way to their campus. In addition, PTA can also look at expanding after-school offerings. And that also can be helped, that can be run and led through parent volunteers through the support of PTA. And if we see what would be a hopeful significant increase in PTA involvement, let me rephrase that, the PTA is very involved. If we see a significant increase in the number of people involved in PTA, the other thing that is beneficial in that structure is we can help put things together for those parents who are desiring to be more involved and structure a set of trainings, guidelines, experiences, so that our parents are best equipped to be a part of our school community and involved with their students' education. Other aspects that PTA has been able to help with are things like putting on vape prevention intervention nights, digital citizenship and safety trainings. They've helped us with those. And then positive parenting classes as well. Some things that are already in place, which you know about, but they are important and they will continue, just to highlight them. The Start With Hello program, the Save Clubs, the Say Something Reporting System, the fact that we have at two of our elementary schools engaged in the Choose Love program, which is a social and emotional learning curriculum, and the continuation of our district safety committee. And then already in place at our Martinez Junior High School is a level of counseling support for school psychologists, mental health counselors, and behavior counselors and academic counselors. In conclusion, I would want to say that the one thing that has been very evident to me in my meetings with the new principal, Ms. Cusack, and with the CSEA and MEA members at those sites is they have a profound belief in the junior high school as a whole and that the junior high school is a great place and can become a much better place than it has been recently. Back to a level of excellence that it has achieved in prior years. And the staff is most certainly committed to those students and to those values and to those practices. And they are looking forward to starting a new year, having a shift in their morale and their energy, and bringing a different vibe and focus to the junior high school under Ms. Cusack's leadership. And I know that we're looking forward to that at the start of the school year as well. That is the sum of the information that I have to present tonight. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
I had just a couple of comments from my own personal middle school expert, who's long since retired, but who worked at a very difficult school, Glennbrook Middle over in Mount Diablo District. Not, not to the level of Martinez Junior High. It was a heavily gang school in many ways. One of the things that she said helped them a lot is, and I don't know if we already have this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but was having teachers, not just administrators, before and after school. So not every teacher out, but she called it, it was almost like yard duty. But having the teachers out on the campus before and after school was also pretty helpful. It's another way of doing the positive behavioral support thing, which I might suggest you talk to Pittsburgh Unified because at one time when I was there and we were doing after-school programming, that was a very popular program there. And I found it to be fairly effective, especially with our minority kids because we were having a huge problem with a lot of kids of color being suspended and expelled. And that significantly reduced that behavior issue. So that was one suggestion. The other is, one of the things that they required at her school is that teachers actually stand at their doors during passing time just as a way to make sure you kind of know what all's going on around you. I don't know if we have that. Again, I'm not on the campus every day. But those are the kinds of things that she seemed to think were helpful at her school site. Excuse me, and then when we look at parents, especially if they're working in after-school programs or on the campus, we have policies and that sort of thing that would be specific to the kinds of programs we're talking about, not just a general policy of fingerprinting, et cetera. But I think any, but any parent who's going to be on the campus needs to have some training in conflict resolution and confidentiality and all of those other kinds of things. Maybe CSEA has board policies for that higher level of participation on the school campus of parents.
Thank you, Kathy. Certainly take that into consideration, just to answer to some of those. Our staff is present before and after school for supervision assignments. And during my time on the campus, I saw the majority of our teachers standing outside their door, watching students during passing period as well.
Thank you. I just, you know, since I'm not there every day, it's like, if you didn't, you'd be there.
Any other questions? Comments?
No questions, just some, some comments. CJ, thank you very much for this report. I think it's very thorough and definitely reflects a lot of the discussions that you and I have had, excuse me, that you and I have had and that I've had with members of the community and you and I have had with members of the community. I'm very happy to see that there's an emphasis on character development and as well as emphasizing the role of the PTA. I think that unfortunately, in a lot of the discussions that we've been hearing over the last couple of months, the role of the PTA hasn't necessarily been, been given its, its fair due. So Todd, I appreciate you being here tonight and really want to do everything that I can to help support the PTA in its efforts because I do see it as the existing vehicle to deliver the type of necessary change that we need. You know, when we talk about character development, I've been doing my own research on these issues. And I've learned from several colleagues of mine who are engaged with an organization that puts on Character Day. So that's something that I'd like to keep exploring. That's in September 27, 28 of 2019. It's a free program throughout the country. The State Superintendent of Public Instruction often endorses it as former Superintendent Torleks did last year. And we expect that Tony Thurman will as well. It's a free program. I mean, these are just, there's, there's resources out there. We have the, the ability and the capacity. We just have to put it all in place, and I'm confident that we will. So thank you very much.
I also thank you for the report. Thank you to Ms. Cusack for taking on. And you, you're still wearing another hat. And so I really, I really recognize that you've jumped in with both, with both feet. So thank you for putting in the extra time. Thank you for the presentation, CJ, and addressing a lot of these issues. And, you know, the, the one thing that I, I think that a lot of these are underlined is, is communication. It's not only, you know, character development, it's communicating with our kids. These are, these are young adults in a lot of ways. They're children. So I think letting them be a part of the solution, both the older ones mentoring the younger ones, but also empowering our incoming sixth graders to be, be responsible for their own new community and culture that they're creating there at the junior high. But also within the system, really, having these monthly leadership team meetings, I think will be valuable. And, and I know we have really great teachers and leaders on that campus who are, are willing to roll up their sleeves and, you know... know, I really applaud the efforts. And I know from what I hear is that we're ready for the new school year to start. And I know, I know, starting off early is a great thing to do. I think this was a lot of extra work to do at the end of a year, but I think it really sets people up for success when they know what is going to be expected and what is, what is going to be our standard. So thank you for setting some high standards that I know we'll all try to strive for, and I'll try to do my part as well, wherever that may be, whether it's PTA or, you know, here in the boardroom. Thank you for putting in the hard work.
The other part that I just want to highlight and emphasize is that if it wasn't part of this presentation, it doesn't mean that there's an element of, that's completely off the table. Remembering that this was intended to be planning for success in 1920. So when we talk about a shift of student culture and student climate and the overall culture and climate of a school, as I said in the beginning, that's nuanced, and that takes us some time. And so we want to be realistic about the expectations, not that we have all the time in the world and everything can just stay status quo. But if we're going to make meaningful change that's going to last, we want to also have some, some parameters for understanding that that shift is going to take a little bit of time, and this is how we, we plan on starting that shift. It doesn't mean that at different points in the future, there aren't other things that can be also explored. For example, one of the things that we have heard discussed is restorative justice, and there are aspects of that, and then there are entire programs implemented with deep fidelity. And there are aspects of that that certainly can be explored at different points in time, but in terms of starting the shift, this is where we felt like we would be planning for the most success in 1920. And I just want to highlight that just because something isn't included in this presentation, doesn't mean that it's off the table for eternity and that other things aren't also options in the future.
Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you again for doing this and for getting it to us, so I could actually forward it to my resident expert. Also, one of the things that when we were talking about expulsions and suspensions, one of the things that I think we should emphasize at the beginning of the school year, and I don't think I'm alone in this, is the issue around vaping, because it is such a much more intense problem than just smoking was when we were all in school. You know, we had different experiences just among the five of us. I mean, we didn't allow smoking, but that didn't mean that every bathroom you ever went into wasn't this cloud of cigarette smoke, or there were places on campus later where you actually had a smoking section for students, and then went to nothing. And now we have had in the past, programs that the city and the county have put into place around smoking and sale of cigarettes to minors, but I don't think they have anything in place around vaping and selling vape pens and that sort of thing. So maybe that is something that we could look to, both the PTA and also to the city, to help us with, because kids aren't going to use it as much if it's much harder to get than it currently is. And again, thank you for getting this out to us in plenty of time.
I don't have any cards, but are there any public comments? Brenda?
I apologize for being a bit late, so I only caught part of the presentation. I'm very appreciative, too, that we have an action plan. MEA and the teachers, the incredible teachers at that junior high, want this all to be successful. Please don't hesitate to come to us and to ask us if there's something that needs to happen. We want to make that happen for our students, for our community. The one thing I, the one question I do have and that I remember doing as a fifth grade teacher was, as our fifth graders marched down the halls for their promotion ceremony, there were a handful that I kind of blessed myself and had a little prayer for, because I already know the amount of support that they're going to need at the junior high. We used to meet, when the fifth grade teachers would bring our classes there, while the classes were taken, we would actually meet with the counselors and whatnot about specific students that would need support. And I, maybe that happened, maybe that was part of the plan, and I missed it, but I think that that would be very valuable in getting that sixth grade class set up for success. And again, thank you so much for doing this, and continue to hear teachers. Don't just listen, hear the teachers. Thank you.
All right, I do have three, three cards. I'm assuming, oops, one is for public comments. Okay. Anna Marie Farias, was that for this one?
Anna Marie Avila Farias. First of all, I want to thank staff and CJ for putting this together. However, I am beyond disappointed. After ninety days of parents coming here every night explaining, you know, our issues at the junior high, and that we have a plan before us that really has no substance, and I'm sorry, but we need a strong pivot, not a gradual one, a strong pivot that you can gradually implement things, but a very strong pivot to change the culture at the junior high in particular. I'm very concerned about trying to use the PTA as the conduit to address this problem when this is a leadership and administrator issue that should be dealt with. Our request from the community was very clear that we needed parent engagement on the campus, and I see no plan in here of how that's going to be brought through, other than the PTA. The PTA is a problem, because if you look at your PTA run or parent-run Facebook pages, that is what that's going to turn into, and we've discussed that at this podium numerous times. So I'm very concerned of this very critical problem being a conduit of the PTA. So I'd ask that you guys rethink that. Kathy, you brought some good points on, again, on the parent. I think you were the only one, and John, bringing up, you know, the parent engagement. This does not address the parent engagement needed on that campus beyond the PTA being the mediator of this. So I'm a little really disappointed after so many meetings, but we're going to keep coming until we see a strong pivot, because if you all don't pivot, we will pivot in a different way.
Next speaker will be Amy Scott Slovic, followed by Michelle Gibson, followed by Craig Lazaretti.
Hi, good evening. My name's Amy Scott Slovic. I have four kids through the district. One is at, let me see, one is still at Los Juntas, but it's going to be going to Morello. I have twins, one's from, coming from Mr. Lessig's class, we talked there the other day, from Mr. Lessig's class, and his twin sister's coming from Los Juntas, and they're both going to be going to the junior high. Then I have another child who's placed at Marcus with autism. So I have a few, well, I actually have a lot of concerns right now having my twins moving. Both of them have experienced a lot of problems with some pretty serious bullying, and they're going to be going to the junior high. And of course, my son Ben has been in a very wonderful, I mean, wonderful classroom with Mr. Lessig at John Swett, which is a small day class, and it's counseling enriched, and it's been great for him. But he does have issues with a lot of impulse control and a lot of, he's got some mental health issues and things going on. And I'm very concerned about how it's going to be when he's doing things like passing in the hall next, next year, or if there's miscommunications, or he was bullied so badly at Los Juntas, going back in with some of these kids that were really seriously bullying him now that will be at the junior high. And when I look at these proposals that are here, I do see some, some things that I really like, but I do agree with Anna Marie that there needs to be some way, some method, that parents can be much more involved there. I know how much junior hires do not want parents involved or being around them, but this is so important. I agree, they need to be trained. I agree, there needs to be some, something going on, but whether or not it's that we take lunch, we all take turns having, this is the time that we do it for this, I come this day at lunch, and you come that day at lunch, and that there's just a lot of people around. I think it's so important. And I'm a little concerned when I look at the PTA being the people that address it. As a mom with kids with special needs, I have not found the PTAs so far to be very welcoming when I've had kids with special needs. It was very different issues than a lot of the people had, and different experiences than a lot of the people had. And that isn't to say that PTA isn't wonderful. I belong to all of them. I really believe in supporting it. I'm just feeling like there may be a big gap of parents, especially parents who may have kids that are having some of the challenges that might make them more at risk either of being bullied or doing the bullying. It would be really good to have everyone be represented. And I can tell you, if I was on campus, my kids would not, my kids would not be doing, you know, being misbehaving. I'm more worried about them actually having issues done to them, or being different, or looking awkward, or with autism, having different mannerisms that put them likely to be bullied. The other thing I was, the last thing I was a little concerned about when I was looking at this, when we were looking at, there was like that one, two, three, four parts about, like, if a kid's returning from suspension. One concern I had was that it said that for both kids that were involved in the situation, that this would be the step one, step two, step three, and step four. I'm worried about kids that are bullied and then pushed, they're pushed or they're provoked, and then they have a reaction back. How we handle that, or if they're defending themselves, because sometimes, and I've heard this from a lot of other parents, too, that they've had issues where their kid was provoked, or just tried to put their hands up or do that, and then their kid gets suspended because they were fighting when they were trying to get out of a situation. So thank you. Okay, thank you.
We have, we have some more cards. We have Michelle Gibson, followed by Craig Lazaretti, followed by Todd Navarro.
Hi. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation tonight. There were some things I really liked in here. First of all, the emphasis on the sixth grade focus, just to start, since we need to go on, I guess. The other thing I liked was the four systems check-in. I know last year, when my son was bullied, that is something he would have really liked to have somebody check in on him, and it would have given me reassurance as a parent that, you know, that he was valued there. Like Anna Marie said, I do have concerns. Overall, the plan, you know, it looks good, but I don't see specific steps on how it's going to be implemented. Like you said, we do have to have realistic parameters, so, you know, I'll give it that grace, but, you know, just more step by step of how you plan to implement it, I think would give us reassurance as well. I do have some concerns. I mean, PTAs are fabulous. I do have concerns about, you know, funneling so much through it, or putting those extra expectations on them to deal with, you know, incidents like this, where police have been called to school. It just seems to be, to me, unrealistic, but I guess we could see how that goes. One thing that I was happy about, too, was seeing that you're going to really increase the communication with the Martinez Police Department. I think that's, you know, really critical. One thing I didn't see on here was about board member training to really grasp the severity of this issue, and also to understand really in-depth the different systems that will be put in place. Just as a parent here, I don't know if board members are aware, just when you make flip comments, like I said to you the last time when you said, I don't care who started it. I wasn't just talking about big incidents where your child is bullied, or, you know, they get concussions afterwards. I was talking about just the general climate of the classroom, when children don't feel like their teachers care about little things, they're not going to trust them with the big things. And I think, you know, board members need to be really aware of how they speak to parents here. Another comment that was made is that we're never going to get an SRO. You know, if you have never picked up a child that's been knocked down on the campus, you know, every time I see this, the number of this school flash on my phone, I go into a panic. I don't know why they're calling. I don't know what I'm going to pick up on the other end of the phone. You know, it's just scary, and I don't think you really grasp that until it's happened to you. So I just ask for extra sensitivity from the board when you're speaking about matters like this. For example, Deirdre, tonight, when you said, you know, you're all in, you'll make yourself available for whatever needs to happen, it's more of that that we need to hear, and then just to know concrete steps behind that. So it's really good to hear, and just more of that going forward would be good. And like Anna Marie said, I look forward to more details in the future. And also, just extra thanks to the board members and CJ for being there at the graduation at Martinez.
Next speaker, Craig Lazaretti, followed by Todd Navarro, followed by Dee Hernandez.
I appreciate the time and effort you put into putting this presentation together, this action plan together, and I thank you for listening to the parents who've spoken out. There was a comment made earlier about giving parents their due, and I think that was in reference to the PTA, but I really want to make, take this time to give the parents who've spoken out about this issue, who came out here a few weeks ago and talked about the trauma their children have endured, and the courage they showed to stand up. It was an uncomfortable, difficult thing for them, and in some cases, it was difficult and uncomfortable for their children. And they heard about that from their children the next day, and it never should have come to that. Never should have come to a point where parents had to come here in these numbers and share these heart-wrenching stories to get this kind of action. And make no mistake, we would not be here discussing this today if it weren't for those parents and the activist parents who stood up and spoke truth to power on this issue, and weren't afraid of what people thought about them, put the safety and well-being of our children ahead of the image of our schools. And sadly, a lot of folks in our community seem more interested in the images of our schools than the welfare of many of our students. You know, John Kennedy once said, "An error only becomes a mistake when you fail to acknowledge the error." There were errors at this campus for a number of years, and that's what led to the mistakes and the problems and the issues that brought us to this point. Now, this is not to say that there aren't wonderful things happening at this school. There are wonderful things happening at this school, in all of our schools, and none of us have ever denied that. But as long as any of our children are suffering, or any of our children feel unsafe, feel harmed, feel unsupported, that's a problem. That's an issue, and it needs to be addressed. And unfortunately, in my experience, the biggest failure of government agencies at all level is they fail to get in front of problems. They fail to get in front of issues until things spiral out of control or get to a certain point, and in a lot of cases, damage has been done. In some cases, I've seen over the years, people die because of government failure, to get in front of issues, and to understand there's a problem that's building and getting worse. So as much as I thank you for your efforts on this, this could have been done, and should have been done, a year ago or two years ago. And I hope there's some recognition of that, because there will be other issues and problems in the future that as a community we'll need to get in front of. And trying to sweep them under the rug or try to put a positive spin on things doesn't help. Finally, in my last ten seconds, I want to say, the police chief of Martinez has had some great things to say recently about the SRO issue, his commitment to reinstating an SRO. It's funded, it's in their budget, it always has been. He can just be, he said, that comment was made by a board member, that would never be an SRO. That's just totally divorced from the reality of what he said. So thank you.
Our next speaker will be Todd Navarro, followed by Dee Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. So what's ironic is, in the spirit of how we're trying to solve this, which is around our children, I actually stand up here afraid of the potential retaliation that I'm going to get for my comments. I've been misconstrued, sitting in this very room, trying to help solution the problem, as have everyone that's been a part of this. I think what we need to remember is key to this, and I think, and what is phenomenal about this is everybody has one thing at the center of all of this, and that's the children. The one thing that, and I shared this during the safety committee meeting, and I've shared it in LCAP, and I've shared it in site planning meetings, we need to look for bridging opportunities. I liked Brenda's suggestion with discussing fifth graders coming into the campus. I think what we need to realize, we are not unique in some of the challenges that we have with middle school children. Unfortunately, right, wrong, or indifferent, some things have happened, and I think what's great is they're being solutioned. I want to thank this administration for taking the quote-unquote SWAT approach to dealing with the situation that's up there. These are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They're already going through a phenomenal amount of change. We've talked about it. People that have spoken at this podium tonight and other evenings have spoken about the developmental issues. We have to be very careful about how we pivot this, because at the center of this is a child. It's not the parents. It's not the board members. It's somebody's child. And I think that the approach that's taken tonight, as CJ example, it may not be fully representative of every opportunity we have, but it's a start. And as long as we sit in this room and we're all willing to move forward together, I think we can be successful. But until we remove the adversarial relationships that are being formed as a result of these perceived challenges, we're never going to get anywhere. And what's unfortunate is, I come back to, it's a child at the center of the, at the problem. I worked field day at my school at Morello. I worked field day at my school at Morello Park this year. And I have fifth graders that I know come to me. I've had fifth graders come to my seventh grader up at the junior high and ask the very question, is it really as bad as I'm hearing? We've had parents come to us and say, is it really as bad as I'm hearing? And the reality is, in my opinion, it's not. There's just a transition that needs to be handled and dealt with, and it's, it's different. But our community is itself is feeling some of the retributions of what's happening. And it's really time that we come together and look for opportunities that we can work together. Not every solution that comes to this podium is going to be the right one, but I think as long as we look for ways to make improvement and move forward, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have is from Dee Hernandez.
Good evening. I just, I wanted to make sure, I mean, I've never done this in public before. I did have a meeting with CJ by myself because I knew I'd be too emotional. But this project that you did, CJ, the one big thing that's missing is timelines. Timelines for teachers when they see something. Timelines for parents when their, when their child is bloody sitting in a chair. Timelines, that's what we're missing. I, I mean, I really appreciate all the time you put into this. It looks really good, but I don't want to have to, you know, wait for something to happen to my daughter. And this did happen. Nothing happened at the junior high, so we went to the police. Police didn't say anything either. So, we went back to the junior high. It's like, well, what do we do next? They never said, oh, well, maybe you should go to the district, you know? And it's like, you kind of just feel lost. So, part of the other thing that I think is also missing in this, and I, and I don't mean to, you know, really belittle what you've done, but also, where's the diversity training? The sensitivity training? You know, my daughter got called every name in the book about being Hispanic. It's not her fault that she's Hispanic. So, these kids that are out there are just, you know, slurring words left and right, and they have absolutely no accountability, absolutely none. And I don't think it's the teachers that have to, you know, play babysitter. I would like for them to be more into the academic piece. But where is the accountability for the parents of the aggressor? And then also the follow-up for the person, at least you put that in here about, because I think I did mention that to you is, you know, she just felt like left out, like snitches, get stitches and wouldn't want to say a thing. There was one thing that happened really severe to her. She had to wait all the way to the school year ended to tell me about it. And I did come forward, I went straight to the district, I told them about it. I didn't hear a word. And, and you know what I'm talking about, CJ? And I just, I just want you to know. I mean, I did, I want to thank Jonathan Wright for having a meeting with him and opening up to him and, and, you know, the rest of the parents that were there, everybody else that was there. I felt like I'm finally free. I feel like I can breathe again, you know? And after that night, when I had to tell my daughter about all the other kids that got bloodied up and stuff, my daughter's like, Mom, why didn't you talk? And I just didn't feel like she was okay with it. And so, I didn't talk. But I want you guys to know, I mean, you all have kids or you've been a kid. It's no fun and we're still doing aftercare. We're still making sure we do check-ins, things like that. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing more parent, you know, I understand the involvement, but those kids actually get to the high school and there's still more things going on there. So, if we can, you know, more hone in on what's a better plan as far as, you know, don't wait two weeks later to contact my kid about something that she's done. You know, I would like to see a timeline. That's, that was my point. And I hope, you know, like I said, no disrespect for the board, but I really, I feel for those parents who are up here with bloody kids. And especially after hearing my daughter say, well, Mom, I'd rather be bloodied because then I can just feel from that instead of being an emotional thing for, for years. So, please, thank you.
All right, do we have any other public comment? Seeing now we're bringing it back to the board, this was just a presentation. So, we don't, we don't have any further action to take on the, on this particular item. John, you have something?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment real quick. I understand the frustration that some of the, that parents are feeling. But I think there needs to be acknowledgement that there's been a lot of steps happening forward in the last 30 days. Yes, I think we have accepted the responsibility that there has been a level of violence that is just, you can't, you can't justify it. There's nothing there. It's there and we accepted that responsibility. But there are pivots being made and we hired a new principal, Ms. Kuzak. I, my prayers are with you every night. CJ's laid out the groundwork, the timelines, the hard pivot, the, that's under Ms. Kuzak. You gotta give her time. She's been assistant principal. So, she's got two months to get this set up under her regime. And it has to be her because she's the leader. I hope I'm not putting too much pressure on you, but it's what the truth is. I could tell you, the sixth graders in A Building makes a huge difference. Both my boys went through there and they've really isolated the sixth graders and it makes a huge difference. So, as a parent who had that, that's, that's a huge move. I understand the fear of the phone number flashing. Believe it or not, I still get nervous when the phone number flashes and I'm not even having any kids in the system. But there's, there is got to be a time where we acknowledge that, yeah, things did dip. And for whatever reason it happened, we're not denying it's happening. We're saying, okay, but we do have to move forward. And you're going to have to support Ms. Kuzak and the teachers because those teachers are really great. What, my son keeps in touch with one of the teachers there. That's how instrumental those teachers are. So, I think we got the proper structure. I appreciate CJ for this presentation. CJ and Helen, I know you've spent a lot of time at the junior high. That should be acknowledged. That is a hard pivot to bring in our two top people and have them spend time at the junior high. This was not taken lightly. But you need to throw your support and give Ms. Kuzak and the leadership she's going to bring in that chance to make this go forward. So, I know it wasn't everything you wanted, but the recipe's been laid out. I have a feeling that we hired a great administrator. That's now going to put all these ingredients together to create a great Martinez Junior High School. That it was and will be again. So, that's it.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 13, which is public comments. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board and 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there's not enough time to speak at this particular time. I do have three, let's see, I have three different cards today. So, we have Craig Lazaretti, followed by Dee Hernandez, followed by Brenda Navarro.
So, I want to, I got your hands with the junior high, but I want to bring up an issue at the high school. It's come to my attention and has generated some discussion lately among parents and students. And that's the bathroom situation. I understand that some of the bathrooms on campus, maybe it's one, maybe it's two, have been regularly closed to student access because of apparently vaping or other kind of illicit behavior going on in the school, in the bathrooms. As you probably are aware, there have been other broader concerns raised about bathroom conditions at the high school. I think some of them were referenced in the letters that John wrote at a meeting, read at a meeting a couple of months ago. The bathroom conditions at the school are not what they should be from everything I've heard and been told. And then it's now that we're having to close some bathrooms, it's just compounding a bad situation because it's leaving the other bathrooms overcrowded and it's creating, you know, basic hygiene issues. I mean, I hear stories about not being soap, not being toilet paper, faucet's not working. You know, that should be a fundamental issue. And I hope this is not, has nothing to do with funding because if there was a funding issue, it would seem this would be the top priority because it should be common sense or that, you know, the top priority are the aspects of the campus that involve or impact all students. And I don't, can't think of anything that impacts students more than bathrooms. And, you know, I mean, I think it's a simple issue of respect as well. I mean, I think when, when, when kids don't have decent bathroom conditions at school, I don't think it really matters, you know, how great the computer lab is or how great the athletic facilities are or how great the drama room is. I mean, I think that, that is a fundamental issue affecting all students. And I think, you know, let's put ourselves in their shoes. How will we feel if we went to work at our workplace every day and there were bathrooms that did not meet basic hygiene conditions, standards? So, this is just an embarrassment. It's just an embarrassment for our entire district. And I don't mean to point fingers or say that this is unique to our district. I've heard stories that, you know, bathrooms are closed at College Park. I think we have a vaping issue, as Kathy referenced, that's spiraling out of control. It's just going to get worse. There was some attempt in Sacramento to do something about it, but it got shot down because, guess what? You know, the lot, the tobacco industry spent the money it needed to spend to get the bill shot down. So, maybe you can send them a bill for fixing our bathrooms or getting our bathrooms open. I mentioned last year, maybe we could send a bill to the NRA for the cost of trying to keep our school safe because of the mess they caused there. Well, the tobacco companies are going to cause this mess, you know? But it's an embarrassment and I hope something can be done about it. Thank you.
Dee Hernandez, followed by Brenda Navarro.
I had no idea that you would talk about the bathroom situation, but that's what my topic was as well. And as my daughter does go to the school, and I'm on the grounds of parent, as a parent as well, every once in a while to pick her up for appointments, the vaping's still going on. So, even without the additional bathrooms, the vaping's still there. And it's so bad that even in regular classrooms, they're vaping. And it, it's sad because the technology of vaping, it's hard to even see the smoke go up. And so, I just wanted you guys to know that it definitely, it's hard when you go to pick up your, your daughter or son from school and they're like, I gotta go, I gotta go right now. And if I don't go, you know, and it's going to bring UTIs. There's a lot of other things that are involved with that. It's just, you know, she's got to pick between, should I have lunch or should I go to the bathroom? You know, where am I going to spend that time? And that shouldn't be done. She should be able to relax during lunchtime and not have to worry about the long lines going to the bathroom. And, you know, it's just, also, if you're in the K or the J building, you have to walk very far to get to the only two bathrooms that are open. So, I would like to see, you know, hopefully, I mean, I know the vaping is an issue and you guys are working hard to try to stomp that out. But you should also consider if there's any way, you know, to get other people to get the bathrooms open, just like Craig was saying, you know, they're nasty, but at least, you know, they can use them. And just wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Navarro.
So, I just want to talk about grad night because my daughter's a junior. Well, now she's a senior. So, I decided that I would chaperone when she was a junior instead of ruining all of her fun as a senior. I had more fun at grad night. And they honored me by making me third floor security. I actually had a batch, it said, security. And they said they knew who to put in charge of the doors. There wasn't much to do though, so I got stuck watching the kids with the little Velcro things in the bouncy houses bouncing up and getting stuck to the wall so bad that somebody had to go rescue them. There was a lot of joy. I recognized a lot of the kids, of course, because I've had some of them, but just know a lot of them. And it was just wonderful. And I can't say enough about the group of people that put this together. Many, many years ago, we did lose three seniors on Franklin Canyon Road. And I think that that prompted grad night. And it's just a wonderful thing. And I think that whoever is in charge should be commended. And next year, I'm going to donate time beforehand with the decorating because it was insane decorating, just incredible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other public comments. All right, we'll move on and we won't need the additional time at the end of our meeting. Number 14 is our consent calendar. Do we have any changes to our consent calendar?
No changes, but I did want to just call out item 14.4 for recognition. It's on the consent calendar because we've engaged in this agreement with the City of Martinez and the New Leaf Collaborative for many years. And it's an agreement that our board is used to seeing. However, I didn't want to pass over the opportunity to express my appreciation for this partnership and what it means for the recycling program that exists within our schools and for our students.
Great. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Any public comments? We'll bring it back to the board for action. Move for approval? Student vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carried. All right, we are now in the 15s, which are items for board consideration or action. 15.1 is additional targeted support and improvement plans. This is an action item presented by Tom Doppie.
So, this was brought for information at our last meeting. It's here before you tonight for action. I just wanted to take a minute to revisit this presentation, nothing different than last time. But as you'll recall, one of the reasons we have ATSI is in the spirit of our accountability system, both locally and with the state and federally, is that in an effort to make sure that our subgroups, that we don't get great disproportion, certain criteria will lead to our schools being identified for this more intentional planning. To that extent, our three schools, Morello Park, Los Juntas and Martinez Junior High, each revisited the single plan that was adopted earlier this year and looked at it anew through the lens of the subgroups that were identified through ATSI. So, the actions that we've put in place at Morello Park, we're teaching mindfulness in classes, character traits, and the good citizenship is, that goes hand in hand with their Eagle Code. This is in light of the fact that their criteria for qualifying had to do around attendance and suspension. At Los Juntas, similarly with issues around suspension attendance, but also academically with English and math, looking more closely at formative assessment themselves, working on character development and social emotional learning, such as the Choose Love Program that was mentioned earlier, zones of regulation that they've been doing for some time. And then at Martinez Junior High, again, you can see the areas for their criteria that they qualified for, the same as prior with suspension, attendance, English and math. And so, along those lines, continuing to look at co-planning and special education, having the appropriate materials and new materials purchased, differentiated support for English learners, programs that support behavior, social emotional learning and positive rewards and incentives for attendance and behavior. So, this was what was shared with you last time, but as it comes forward tonight for action, wanted to make sure that we highlighted again for you those intentional efforts being made at those three schools to address those subgroups.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Any public comment? We'll bring it back to the board. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Student vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. 15.2 is approval of new instructional materials for the 2019-2020 school year. This is an action item also presented by Tom Doppie.
Yeah, so no rehashed presentation for this one. As you'll recall, we have these four different sets of instructional materials. If approved tonight, we will queue that up for purchase early here in the summer after July 1st with the goal of having these in place and ready to roll out with appropriate professional development next school year.
And before there's any questions, when we had it at our last agenda, it was four different items. Now, they're all together. Just for clarification, are there any other board questions? Public comment? We'll bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Student vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carried. 15.3 is the T-Mobile Tower. This is an action item presented by Helen Rossi.
Over the course of the past couple of meetings, I've brought the T-Mobile plan plus contract forward. And the question that was asked is whether or not the tower going up is a 5G tower. So, I talked to Mr. Johnson from TSJ Consulting. He's the man that I'm working with on the plan and the installation contract. And he said- with on the plan and the installation contract. And he said, "By the time the project is completed, it will be a 5G, as will all cell towers, uh, be converting up to 5G," because that's current plan for upgrading throughout the phone companies. So...
And what kind of revenue are we generating on these cell towers?
About 2,000 a month for each.
And we currently have one there already?
We have one. We had the other one a couple of years ago. They took it down because, um, it was Sprint PCS, not Sprint, um, Sprint, Metro PCS. And then when T-Mobile and two companies joined and they want to put it back. So, um, it's in the same pole in the same place, using the same equipment. It's already caged off area.
And is this our only campus that has, uh, cell towers?
That I know of.
All right.
And they've, they've been there for a while. I can't tell you how long. Mike was here. I'm sure he'd be able to whip that right off the top of his head, but I, I don't have that.
Questions? Jonathan, you had concerns earlier. I'm interested to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, my, my concerns remain the same. I mean, 5G or millimeter wave technology has been used for a number of different purposes, uh, most notably as a type of a, a, a weapon, uh, by militaries around the world and, and, and other law enforcement agencies as well. Uh, it's, it's been shown in laboratory settings to, uh, cause tumors at a rate far greater than normal cell transmissions, which are broadcast at a, at a different frequency. Um, there's just loads of evidence that show that 5G is unnecessary for the type of communications that we're using, uh, as civilians. And, you know, I think time is, time is going to show that, uh, the companies that are pushing 5G were, we're doing so for profit over health and safety. And, and we don't have enough information at this time to say that they are definitively safe, when in fact, tons of evidence points to the opposite. So I worry about it being in such close proximity to our students, to our communities, to County Hospital, to places of work, you name it.
Is this something that you're not interested in supporting? And I ask this because, I mean, I don't know anything about it, but I'm, I'm very, um, I'm very concerned, obviously, like we all are about health and safety issues for our students. And that's our, kind of one of our main tasks. And so, uh, i- if, if someone on the board has a very adverse, um, reaction to this, uh, I'd, one, I like to support people who have more knowledge about, uh, things that I do not. Um, so I guess that's, that's my question for you.
I, I, I wish that I could say I'm a subject matter expert. I'm just someone who's taken the time to, to read a lot of reports and, uh, listen to experts speak. Uh, also in the course of my work, I, I, I come into contact with people who treat cancer patients and to, and, and, and do conduct experiments with different types of equipment. And I could tell you that, uh, members of, of my National Union, the IFPTE, who work at various laboratories around the country, don't consider this safe. Um, not speaking on their behalf or in any way are they speaking on behalf of the government agencies for which they work. But I, I just think that there's a lot of reasons to not support something that was frankly, was invented as a weapon, uh, and then has been, uh, turned, has been monetized by telecommunications companies in, in the age of deregulation. So no, I, I can't in good conscience support this at this time. And believe me, I understand the, the negative impact of, of the loss of revenue, but I think there's other ways that we can mitigate the negative impact of losing that two grand a month.
Kathy? I'm nowhere near the expert that you are, but I did do some research on this as well. Um, and I actually, I went to the Cancer Society because they're the ones who do research in this area, and they actually said the opposite of what you said. Now, I, I'm, I'm not terribly surprised either. On the other side of that coin, I actually worked for the American Heart Association at one time. So I do have a fair amount of respect for an independent, research-oriented group like the Cancer Society or the, you know, the American Heart Association or any of those others. So I did read theirs and unfortunately, my link isn't working now. I was going to send it to you. Um, so I, I don't know. Are they, so I, I'm, I'm sort of in the middle on this. It's like, I am concerned, but I also remember we heard many of these same arguments. Because I was on the board when we did the first leases for this. So we now currently have the one lease that is moving to 5G. Is that what I heard you say for sure? Um, and that is going to stay?
I don't know, I don't know when, but according to the consultant, all cell towers will move to 5G as they are updated.
I also was paying some attention to some recent news saying that that's actually been postponed by over a year, probably because of issues with the Chinese government. And I can never say their name of that cell phone company very well. Away?
Away.
Yeah, I, I got close. Okay. So I, I'm hearing that that's been postponed. And again, you know, this is one of those six people say yes and six people say no kind of thing. Are they going to, did they give you an indication if they're planning to put it somewhere other than on our campus if we don't accept the lease?
No, the only, the only questions I sent to Tom were about the 5G and, um, any health, you know, issues that they have data or research on. And he said, um, basically, he said that he doesn't have any data that like, like that. Everything revolves around operating within the FCC standards of acceptable emissions. All sites are designed to operate within those standards. And when he has a copy of that report, he will send it to me if I ask him for it, which I will. Um, and he said, uh, I asked, "Are all cell towers for all companies going to be upgraded to 5G?" Because I'm just predicting that question coming next time. Stay one step ahead. And he said, "Yes, ultimately, all sites for all carriers will be 5G integrated."
Yeah, that's kind of what I read as well. It's just that they're talking more than a year now because of that. So, you know, given that we heard the same concerns raised when we first put these into place, and then we didn't see or hear of any ill effects, so that's my one experience. And on the other side of that is I don't want to negate what Jonathan is talking about, and I am concerned that we don't, we don't choose to put something on our campuses that could be carcinogenic. But, you know, it's one of those, I, 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 I don't really know. So I'm willing to see this pulled at least over the summer. Let's see if we can do some additional research on this. I don't want to just say no out of hand because I don't think we know enough.
If, if there's any other questions, what I'll do is I'll open up for a public comment and then we'll bring it back and we can decide what action, if any, we're going to take. Any other questions from Jeremy or John? No? Okay. Are there any public comments? We have one?
So I request that you vote no for three reasons. Um, I work in finance, so I'm constantly on my cell phone checking rates, checking emails, whatnot. And there already is 5G in Martinez. There's different locations of my phone has picked it up. So the whole postponement argument doesn't fit because there already are cell towers that are bringing that in. Um, second, $2,000 a month in rent, I don't think is enough to charge. My office alone pays over $2,000 a month in bills just for our office and cell phone Wi-Fi usage. If they were to increase the amount that they would pay you by maybe 10, $20,000 a month, because if you consider how many people are going to be using that tower, 2,000 is not enough. Um, hundreds of people times whatever monthly bill they pay, 2,000 doesn't cut it. Thirdly, um, my mother had cancer and we went out to New York Memorial Sloan-Kettering. They asked for a $150,000 deposit to treat her, just to treat her. After she passed, the bills were over $5 million. Again, $2,000 a month in case one of our students falls ill or gets any type of disease or cancer or anybody in the community, I don't think is enough. That's just my three points on the topic.
Any other public comments?
Um, I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Wright. I would, um, fully agree with you on that. Um, Kathy, I think you brought up a good point too. I think you will find probably equal amounts of people on each side, but I think if there's any risk whatsoever, um, like Yasmin said, $2,000 is pennies to these companies. It's just absolutely ridiculous that we could, could put our students in any kind of risk if there's any, um, indication. And there, there is indication out there that it is a risk. 2,000 is frankly, an insult to the district, given how much those companies make, and it just is not worth it. I mean, yeah, you can roll your, yeah, it, it really is. Yeah.
I don't know the going rate. It's just what we've been paid for many, many, many years. And then there's an increase of a percentage of a CPI that goes above it. I don't have a vested interest.
Oh, no, I, I know you absolutely don't. Yeah.
Is there ever a price on, for someone's life?
No, there absolutely isn't. And just to hear 2,000 is just like mind blowing to me that these companies get away with what they do. Um, that's not reflection on the district or whatever contracts you put out with that company. And I just want to make that clear. Um, but thank you, Mr. Wright.
All right. Is there any further discussion about what action we want to take with this?
I mean, I would just like to clarify a little bit further. I, I, in no way am I an expert. I am not an astronomer. I'm not a radiologist. I'm not a radio astronomer. I am, I am, I'm none of those things. I'm not a weapon specialist, but, and, and, and some could point to me and say, well, you drive an internal combustion vehicle and you, uh, on occasion eat red meat and engaged in other, you know, behaviors that haven't been super healthy. And I'll say, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're living in a place and time in a country that has polluted, that has polluted the earth more than any other country combined, and we continue to do so every day. Global climate change is happening as a direct result of the CO2 emissions that are coming from this country and this hemisphere, and we're doing nothing about it. And so is this really, you know, a quote unquote hill to die on? It's, you know, for me, it's not, other than, I just think that if stuff comes before us and, and Helen, all due respect, I, I know how hard your job is, and I'm not criticizing your negotiating at all. And this is something that, that, that we've done before. I acknowledge that. And sure, is every tower going to switch to 5G? Probably. Does the FCC say it's safe? Absolutely. How many seats on, on, on the FCC board were, were put there directly by people from, from telecommunications industries, virtually all of them now. And so we're dealing with a system that is quote unquote self-regulating. We've got the fox in the hen house, and we're all falling victim to various aspects of telecommunications deregulations in one way or another. And I could talk about this subject ad nauseam, but if something comes before us that I think is just patently unsafe, I'm, I'm going to go that way. You know, I don't, I don't want us investing in any further technologies that I think are harmful for our community. And, and this happens to be one of them. So if we could pull it, that would make me happy. If not, you know, I'll, I'll live. But I, I also live just a couple, like, not that far from there. And there are a lot of families in my district that live not that far from there. It's in my district. Now that we have districts, so, you know, I, I, I kind of have to pay a little bit more attention to it. And, you know, I know that there's towers, uh, up at the top of Harborview. There's towers up on the, on the ridge up above the high school. I mean, we're surrounded by it. We're, we're, we're surrounded in this room by various types of electromagnetic frequencies that are used for telecommunications all the time. We don't know the long-term effects of, of any of them. Is 5G any worse than others? More and more evidence is showing yes. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on this.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I asked. I know this was one of your concerns when we brought it back. Um, you know, I've worked with the Integrated Pest Management, uh, program that we have implemented in this district. Uh, we've made huge, uh, leaps and bounds over what kind of toxic items are being used at our schools. Uh, some of them were not, you know, were kind of controversial that people said that they, um, were harm, you know, were harmless and, and things have changed now over the last couple of years. So, so, you know, I, I, that's why I wanted to make sure, because I haven't been paying attention to that issue personally. I understand you're not an expert, but if, if this, you know, we're a board, we work together. If it's a concern for you, I, I want to make sure that, that going forward, I'm not going to, I don't want to support something that you have a concern about. So that's where I stand on this. We can, as far as I'm concerned, we can pull it and bring it back. Um, or we can, you know, we're, we always need money, but I agree with you, Helen. If we have a real health and safety concern about something, then we don't need to put it on our campuses.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, so what do you, you guys want to bring it back or what do we want to do? Do you want to have someone come and talk to us about it? Do you want to send it to a committee to look into it? Well, we have committees, are, you know, that, that can look at it. We've got a health and safety committee. We've got a-
I think we should have a concern about the existing tower. So, in that respect, I would like to see it come back. Maybe we can find out or get some, actually get someone who, you know, hard to find a, a neutral party, but do the best of our ability. If we can take a look at what the pro and con arguments are, because it feels to me like, you know, I, because I could have gone and I, yeah, I happened to look specifically to see if anybody had a, I'm not so sure, uh, opinion, because there were tons of opinions from groups that I did not recognize that were saying, oh, no, there, there's all of this other stuff. I chose not to use them because again, I don't know the groups and I'm not a scientist. That's not my background. So yes, if we could have someone come at some point, and I, I have no clue when it would be. I don't think we want to have it, you know, next time. I certainly don't want to have it till after the summer. But one, it's one thing to add something, but it's another thing if we have an existing tower that's going to go 5G, that's just as bad, if in fact it's bad. Wouldn't you say?
I don't know. I really don't know. I, I think it does warrant further conversation. So...
I'll, I'll work, I'll, I'll work with Helen and CJ to make sure that it gets on a future agenda item, likely not the first one out the gate when we return, uh, from summer. But, and I don't, we also need to know what the impact is going to be for their contract. They may not want to deal with us. Um, and so we can look at that and we'll also find out what the existing tower is, what the breadth of that contract is and in terms. And if there's any particular limitations, maybe we can, uh, still engage in a contract and exclude a certain type of, um, service that, that they'll be providing. I don't know, but we can, we can certainly explore that further before we bring it back. Okay. So we're good? All right. Is that enough? Okay. Thank you. Um, the next is 15.4, which is the Food Services Management Company, RFP. It's an information and possible action item presented also by Helen Rossi. Uh, any board questions? Any public comment? Okay, so we can, uh, this is for information possible action. My question would be, just what it, what's the benefit of us doing it now? Great. All right. So do we have three shakes of the head? Yes? Okay. Um, so do we have a motion?
I move we accept Chartwell as our new food service.
Second.
We student vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
I just wanted to thank you, Helen, for working so closely with the state and getting this on our agenda in that little tiny window that you had to do this. I know it was a ton of extra work. So I certainly appreciate it.
I have a new friend at the CDE. We work like this.
All right. We got, we got a couple more for you, Helen. Okay. 15.5 is a public employment amendment to employment agreement with superintendent presented by Helen Rossi as information possible action.
Okay. So before you tonight is an addendum to our superintendent's contract, employment contract, to allow him to participate in the same health and welfare benefits that every employee in the district participates in at the same rates that they participate in according to the administrative unit. There are different rates for different units and this, this addendum calls for the certificated management rate.
And I, I see that it's for information possible action. Obviously it, it would get it done sooner for the application process.
Right.
Right. Okay. Any other board questions? Any public comment? Seeing that, oh yeah, there's one. Okay.
Yeah, more of this is a question in interest of transparency. Can you say how this, if at all, will impact the superintendent's total compensation? Percentage of, in terms of whether it'll be a percentage increase change to the total compensation?
Sorry. Just as it does for every employee who participates in our health benefits. If it depends on what your selection would be. So if I, if, if our superintendent chose benefits just for himself and not for the rest of his family, it would be an additional cost of about $79, $84 a year. He already has the dental and vision that you have to participate in, I believe, both of them. If he was to have just him and his spouse, sorry, I put my glasses on. It would be about just under $16,000. And if he was to put a full family on, it would be, the employer part would be $20,759. The total medical package is with employer and employee cost is about $22.5.
So just to be clear, that's an increase or is that the total from current?
So he, if he chose to have benefits just for himself, his total compensation package would have an additional expense of $7,984, just as would any employee coming into the district. Has those same options.
Thank you. Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? We'll bring it back to the board. This is presented as information or possible action. We have three shakes of the head. We can go forward. I see three shakes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. The next is 15.6, Review of Resolution 2019-24 Regarding the Education Protection Account. This is an information item presented by Helen Rossi.
So each year, all districts are required to have their EPA spending plan adopted by the school board. And consistent with all years that we've ever had EPA funding, this, the Martinez Unified School District has the money from this EPA account or EP account. It goes towards teacher salaries, 100% of it. It just defers the cost or defrays the cost of the teacher salary. Goes right into the 11, or the 1,000. It's never done anything different. So tonight I'm asking the board, it's, well, I think it's for information, correct? Yeah, it's for information. It's basically just introducing the topic again for the year and just letting everyone know that the money once again will be used for teacher salary.
Any more questions? Any public comment? Then we can look forward to seeing it at our last meeting of the year. 15.7 is also an information item. It's the review and adoption of Resolution 2019-25 to identify the amount of budget reductions needed in 2021 and 2021, 22 school years. It's an information item presented by Helen Rossi.
Okay. So I'm requesting that the board adopt this resolution prior to adopting the 1920 budget. Because in the multi-year projection for 1920, 2021 and 2122, it is necessary to cut in the next school year, so 1920. So by 2021, we will need to cut 1.4 million. And then the third year out, we would need to cut an additional 400,000 for a total of up to $1.8 million. In order to pass, to get our budget passed on our multi-year projections, we have to have a resolution showing that we'd make those cuts. We also know that between today and July 15th, the governor is making changes and the, you know, specific committees making changes on, the governors may revise, which may prove to be helpful for us so that we don't need to cut this much. But right now, as the numbers stand with our estimated actuals and our, the budget that I've created, we need to show those cuts in order to meet our 3% reserve on the third, second and third year out.
Any board questions? Any, any public comments?
Another question. In the past, when we've had to make these kinds of cuts, the last couple of years, I know we have to make the cuts so far out and seems like we have to budget for worst case scenarios sometimes. What's been the history, the last year or two of having to carry out the proposed or expected cuts or roll them back?
I think in the, in the past three years or two years, we've cut up to just over $2 million. CJ will probably have the number.
Yeah. In the last three years, we've cut just about $2 million from our budget. In terms of the past history of what that looks like, it depends on year to year. We've had years where unhonored actuals came in much better than anticipated and that obviously lessens the amount that needs to be reduced from the budget. But generally, when we've projected budget reductions, we've had to make budget reductions in terms of an annual, how much actually needs to be cut versus the projection. I don't, we don't have that information in front of us tonight. A lot of that is going to depend on what happens with the final budget. Our county has advised us, as Helen will probably review later, not to budget the pers and stirs changes yet until the state actually adopts the budget at the state level. That will impact our budget and then the unhonored actuals will also impact our budget once we find out what those numbers are. So as Helen said, we, we hope that the total number reduced from the budget will end up being far less than this, if perhaps nothing, but there certainly is not a trend of revenue outpacing expenditures from the state level or at the local level.
And we had, aside from using the waiting to find out the actual numbers, to use the percentages from the governor's budget on the 15th of July. There's also, we had a decrease in ADA at three of our sites this year, which has a huge impact on our expected revenue, which wasn't really, it was a little bit of a shock to the system. So, but we do have an opportunity next year to get our kids in school, get them in classes, and that will help that because you get to take the best of the past two years. So will we have to cut? I, I, I think we will. Do I think it's going to be 1.8 million? I don't think so.
Thank you for the explanation. One quick follow-up of my remaining time. If these cuts do have to be carried out, does the district have an idea where they will be carried out in terms of programs or budget items?
Not at this time. I just got the information together last Wednesday.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. So this will bring you back to the board. This is an information item. We will see it again. 15.8 is Review of Resolution 2019-26 Authorizing Year-End Intra-Budget Transfers. Another information item presented by Helen Rossi.
I get all the exciting ones. By signing this resolution, it gives the district permission to make transfers between its funds and object of expenditures so that the budget can be balanced and we can pay our bills for the 1920 year. This is something that we do every year at this time.
Board questions? Public comment?
Can you just be a little more specific of where you're transferring the money from?
I'm not transferring any money from anywhere right now, but as we close the books and we open the next year's books, if we need to move money around to pay the bills before we actually close the books, this gives us the authority to. But no money will be transferred to any fund where it's not paying a bill.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other public comment? All right. We'll bring it back to the board. This will, we will also see this at our final meeting. 15.9 is a public hearing and review of 2019, 2020 Local Control and Accountability Plan and the LCAP Federal Addendum. It's an information item presented by Mr. Tom Dopp.
All right. So privileged to present to you tonight an overview of this year's Local Control and Accountability Plan. We can't go very far into any of these meetings without a quick refresher for ourselves and for the public. LCFF being the funding formula, which we will be talking about later today. How we receive funds from the state and then our LCAP being then the plan for how we here locally decide to prioritize funds to align with both state and district priorities. Again, how the LCFF works, we receive a base grant. Every district receives one. Districts receive also supplemental grants to target high need students to help increase or improve services to increase their achievement. And then there's also the potential for districts to receive concentration grant of which we don't receive because of the percentage of our high need students. One thing as it pertains to the LCAP in particular, on a slide like this to keep in mind, we only receive supplemental funny, funny money. And those funds came for next year to the anticipated total of a little over $2 million. That $2 million we receive in supplemental money specifically for increasing and improving services for our high need students. And that is a target that we essentially need to show in good faith that we've spent with efforts to serve those students well. That is not a pot of money that we would necessarily strive to come in under. If anything, that would be seen as problematic, both from the county, who has to approve our LCAP as well as the state. So the goal really is to create a LCAP that addresses at the very minimum how we spend that $2 million and can reference other funds as well. So all schools adopt an LCAP with a three-year plan. Those LCAPs are created in three-year cycles, of which the 1920 school year is the third year of that cycle. So back last school year in 1718, the Local Control Accountability Plan that was adopted then had already in it descriptions of goals, actions and services for the 1819 school year as well as for the 1920 school year. From year to year, you can modify and change those. You're encouraged to do so based on how the reality has been of what your district's needs are. But in many ways, the work that we had projected would be needing to be done still come 1920 was accurately foreseen there. Come next year, there will be a new three-year plan that's developed. That is 2021, 2122 and 2223. So this is really the close of the current three-year LCAP. The LCAP has those goals, actions, services and the related expenditures, as well as explaining how it targets specific subgroups, as well as all students, of course. And then it must show how we are addressing those eight state priorities. For us here in our district, the district goals, as evidenced, they're seen in our framework of focus, are synonymous with the goals in our LCAP. In the 1718 iteration of the LCAP, if you can go back in time, you'll recall there were four goals. But that was an example where last year at this time, the decision was to go from four goals, the fourth being specific to technology, to three goals where we now see technology as just a complementary element to our teaching and learning goals and so forth. So our goals for 1920 will stay the same. Our focus on college and career readiness and high quality standards aligned instruction, safe and supportive schools and sound fiscal management. There you can see how each of the goals relate to those eight state priorities, how they cover all of our bases, some in multiple places. And then for each goal, there are any number of actions. And for each of those actions, any number of more discreet services that go with it, all of which, as you'll see in your exhibit for tonight, create for a nice lengthy document with many bullet points and many elements, sub-elements and so forth. But if you're just kind of thinking about the overall structure and organization of the LCAP, we have three goals with these 15, six and two actions and then more discreet services that go with those. Also, the way the LCAP is written, it begins the review of performance from the 1819 school year. This really is a summary in some ways of what we've shared with you here in these meetings over the course of the year. Here we are writing our LCAP reflecting on our 1819 accomplishments. But we've already shared with you these progresses. You'll recall earlier this year when discussing the dashboard, we highlighted how we were blue as our color with the highest performance indicator for our college and career readiness indicator, how our African-American student subgroup across the district showed growth in both English and math and then that sort of noteworthy growth that we saw school-wide at John Muir as well as Morello Park. It also asks us to identify what are our greatest needs. And we continue to see the need to focus on our attendance, to focus on school climate and then district-wide growth on ELA and math for all of our subgroups broadly at all of our sites. So then it asks us to reflect on what we did in 1819 as far, far as the goals. And largely, we carried out the goals, actions and services over the course of our school year, just as we had projected in last year's LCAP. There were numerous metrics in the document that would support how we implemented those. Numerous anecdotes or other examples that maybe aren't as quantifiable as a, as a number that also describe how we implemented and accomplished our goals, actions and services. And then lastly, when you add up all of how we actually spent money in 1819, we came within 2.2% of what was budgeted of last year's supplemental money. That's actually, I would say, quite impressive. The threshold from the county and from the state, they do expect, just as with any budgeting, that we might anticipate that our goals, action, services may cost X amount, but it may not. Kind of it starts to raise red flags for them if it were to get well below into the 10, 20% off of our target. It might suggest that we didn't spend enough on our high need groups, that we didn't provide for them the intent of the services that the state provided us money for. But the fact that we came in right on target, I think speaks in good faith to both how we planned and then how we executed our LCAP in order to try and support our high need students. So then looking ahead, our goals stayed the same, but just what were some of the highlights related to goal one in the 1920 LCAP? Of course, we adjusted our budget to reflect what we actually spent in 1819, try and get our numbers a little more cleaned up. We made some changes with our metrics. Let's say, for instance, at one point we had said, well, we will increase or decrease some number by 5%. But over the last two years, it's only happened at a rate of 1% for maybe we said improve and we've actually declined. So we've adjusted our metrics to reflect more achievable targets based on what we've, how we've trended. Goal one, being around teaching and learning, we've also allocated money for 912 social studies as well as 912 science. That's allowed us to use money outside the LCAP. Remember, the LCAP doesn't describe necessarily every dollar that we receive for K5 science and other textbooks. Remember, the LCAP doesn't describe necessarily every dollar that we receive for K five science and other textbooks. We've also increased the allocation of money that we look to spend on our structure that we have for our units of study support teachers. So we're looking to expand their role and capacity in the district about how our local teachers can help support our, their peers and improving their practice around units of study, which is our reading and writing program at the elementary level. A more prominent call out in our LCAP this year is around our MTSS. You'll remember that our multi tiered systems of support look at academics, behavior and social emotional learning. So as it pertains to goal one around teaching and learning, our LCAP this year calls out an increase in assessment tools. We are going to be purchasing a product IXL for all four elementary schools, for all students K five for math and English. That will help us gather that real time data about student performance. Also before and after school interventions often referred to in the plan as open labs or intervention groups. And then also working hard to sustain and grow our CTE programs. That was one of our greatest areas of progress and accomplishments this past year. We definitely want to make sure that we continue to support our CTE programs to maintain that high status that we had this year. As well as other actions within goal one that support our broad spectrum of students. Our gate AP students or ELS are socioeconomically disadvantaged, special education and homeless foster students. Looking at goal two, you'll recall goal two is a little bit shorter of a goal, only six actions instead of the fifteen. Again, adjusting the budget, adjusting the metrics. We made sure to keep in our LCAP the amount of funding needed to sustain our mental health counselors as well as our campus supervision to maintain them even at the level that we have this year is an increased amount of dollars, given the increases and pay that happened between last year's adopted budget or adopted LCAP and this year. So we made the appropriate adjustments so that we could maintain the degree of mental health counselors and campus supervision in goal two. We also called out MTSS related items and this complements what Mr. Kamik was going over earlier through the lens of Martinez Junior High and other schools as well, with funds allocated for us participating in training around positive behavior supports. Even if, as was mentioned earlier, a partnership with the county happens, there will be costs that are incurred with that and that are shared with the county. We've called out funds here in the LCAP to make sure that we have the resources to do that. Also, training around equity and culturally responsive practices, as that's an area that where we need to continue to grow and improve. We've called that out specifically as well as attendance interventions. We identified that as a area of growth and we've made sure to call out here in our plan the action services as well as the funding in order to help improve attendance. Parent outreach, communication and also maintaining our various safety initiatives, notably the Sandy Hook Promise. Lastly, goal three around sound fiscal management. This is really a brief goal largely describing how we are moving forward with our facilities master plan. One of the changes that we did make was there was in the eighteen nineteen, a call out for a transfer to deferred maintenance. But as based on prior decisions earlier this year, that transfer didn't happen. And so we took that out of the nineteen twenty plan as well. So every year, as we go through the process of revising the LCAP, we involve stakeholders along the way. We had four meetings this year with our executive advisory committee. We've had, which was made up of a variety of stakeholders from board members to administrators, teachers, parents. We bring the LCAP down to our, our DLAC, our district English learner advisory committee. We also met at our different secondary schools with students to get their input as well as with our administrators. Along with the LCAP, we have to prepare what's also called the federal addendum. So in short, the federal plan, the Every Student Succeeds Act, has its own reporting requirements for how we can access various federal dollars such as the title monies, title one, two, three, four and so on. That is largely complimentary to what the state requires for our LCAP. The state asks that we consider our LCAP first, that the requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act shouldn't really drive how we design our district spending there and our district action plan. But then at the end of this process, we have to essentially show how the LCAP translates to meeting the requirements of the federal plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act. I like that word that we hear sometimes about the braiding, right? It's in, gives a nice image of how we overlap funds that we receive from the state and from the federal government in order to create a coherent unified plan that's stronger with the two together. And so in the federal addendum, for our purposes here and sharing with you, there are no new actions, goals or services that go into the federal addendum, nothing, no new content per se. It merely explains how the LCAP meets those federal requirements. Just as a little bit of a visual for that, the LCAP concludes with a breakdown of what all is the dollars included in it. Here you can see the different funding sources and the nineteen twenty column. In total sum, the LCAP describes how we'll spend about four point eight million dollars. You'll recall earlier that we are required to show in our LCAP how we spend our supplemental money, that two point zero four eight. But in addition to that, you'll see that there are other call outs from our base funding locally defined as our bond money. And then here in that example of braiding, we also allude to how we spend different title monies in our LCAP plan to show how really it's one coherent plan for how we spend our different revenue in order to accomplish the goals of the district. So we have to bring forward to the board as well as to the public, the LCAP and to have conducted as a public hearing with a time for public comment. So that's what brings us here tonight and then it would go to the board again for action in two weeks. It does have to be submitted to the county and further on to the state by July first. And so we are bringing it here to you tonight to, for information and to open up this period of public comment.
And that synopsis is, is also contained in a one hundred and sixty one page document, right?
Well, the synopsis, this is the synopsis of the hundred and sixty page document, yes.
Right, and so where would, where is that available for people to review? The full document?
It's, it's with our board packet for tonight. I frankly offhand don't know where or how we have made that visible elsewhere if we put it on the website or CJ, go ahead.
Yeah, we've generally put it on the website. We'll have it on the website tomorrow morning and then we also have a link to provide written commentary to the superintendent because one of the regulations stipulates that I respond to all public questions, concerns or comments regarding the LCAP during this time period.
Thank you. Any other board questions? All right, well, this time we will recess this meeting. And we will open a meeting for public comment or public hearing on review of the two thousand nineteen, twenty local control and accountability plan. And federal addendum is presented. Is there any public comment?
I just have a couple of questions. With the goal one, you mentioned open labs and I'm unfamiliar with those, so I was wondering if someone could explain what they are.
It's a sort of generic term we use for, at one school might be keeping the library open after school for an hour so students can access the wifi. Maybe we coordinate peer tutoring, things like that. But at another school, maybe it's the computer lab that stays open. So the location might change from site to site. The idea is basically how we budget so that we can keep staff present to maintain the site open after school or before school for students to access.
Okay, and those are at all campuses?
Not at all, it's primarily at the secondary schools.
The counselor positions, are those funded solely with the LCAP funds or the supplemental funds?
Helen, do we have any that are not with?
Yes, some, some of the counselors, it depends, mental health, we have mental health counselors, we have behaviorists and we have academic counselors. Not all of them are funded through the LCAP, but I believe the mental health and the behaviorists are in the LCAP because they, they address the, the issues of concern, the academic, I think only one and a half academic are, are in there for specific goals and reasons.
Oh, yes, that helps jog my memory too. So although I included here a call out under the safe supportive schools that we were able to sustain our mental health counselors through this plan. Elsewhere in that larger document is a call out in goal one about maintaining academic counselors and things like that that can support our high need students.
And my last question was, you mentioned options for attendance outreach? What would those be?
It was, the, the bullet point was attendance incentives. But we've talked over the time about looking at different things about how do we positively reward students who have either improved their attendance over time or who maintain a high level of attendance. That could be anything, we at times have solicited gift cards from the community or treats, prizes, things like that. So that depending on the age level, kind of their interests, that we could try to come up with some sort of reward system to incentivize improved attendance or maintaining high attendance rates in the first place.
And those are student incentives. I wonder if we can inform parents of the loss of funds that the district sees because of this school.
In the LCAP, in addition to just those incentives, it also does call out in there parent education or community outreach to explain the costs of a missed day of school, attendance flyers, things like that. The LCAP in goal two and one of the actions goes into further explicit detail about steps it will take to try and improve student attendance. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
I read over a little bit of the report, quickly the summary, and there are some definite signs of progress in some areas. Achieving gap areas that we should be happy about and proud of. In terms of areas of concern, the one I wanted to talk about is math at Alhambra High School. The report is very candid and I appreciate the candor that was using the report to talk about our alarming decline in our math scores at the high school. And obviously we'll have to see what happens since the students just took the standardized tests within the last couple of months and we'll get, I guess, those scores in the fall. So we can hope that this was an anomaly. However, if it was not an anomaly and these scores hold true, stay steady or even get worse this year, I think it's really an area of significant concern and used to be addressed very aggressively by this district. There may be very, there may be a range of issues for why those scores dropped so much. But I think there is a specific instructional issue at the school that needs to be looked at carefully. And I just would just hope that, given all the, all the emphasis on STEM these days and the importance of math as part of our curriculum, and this is the area where, you know, wherever kids are at elementary school level, the junior high level, this is where they end their academic careers with us and they're ending, a lot of our students are falling through the cracks, ending their academic careers on a very poor note in terms of math, that's something we should all be very concerned about. And I, I know from the feedback I've gotten that you are looking at this issue and taking it seriously. But I think, you know, in terms of the, the issues at the high school or the issues I personally are most involved with and care most about right now. So I definitely just want to ask you to look very closely at that issue heading into next year. For me, bathrooms, math and desks are the big, big three at the high school next year. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I also am very concerned with math. I know Las Juntas is struggling a lot. I know that Morello Park's scores have dropped a lot. And as far as my kids, I ended up enrolling my daughter in Kumon because I don't like, well, it's not that I don't like, I don't understand the way that elementary is teaching math to my daughter. I understand Kumon because that's the way I did math and that's how I can help her. So my daughter has fallen so far behind in math that I tell her, you know what, don't worry about the math in school. I don't care about that. I want you to focus on Kumon because I see that she's learning through Kumon. My son, he had a fabulous seventh grade math teacher at Martinez Junior High. I can't remember her name, but she was great. But I'm actually enrolling him at DVC, college level, the algebra class, just to strengthen that math just because I care so much about math. And I obviously understand the importance of math. But how many parents at Las Juntas can relate or know where to get resources to help their kids? I actually sat in on the ELAC meeting here and pretty much the feedback that was given to the Spanish speaking parents was, we'll just give them extra help outside of the home. So how does a parent who doesn't speak the language, who probably has minimal education, how do they help their kids with math? Right? They can't. So these kids keep falling farther and farther and farther behind. There's obviously tiered obstacles to overcome with this demographic at Las Juntas, but it's definitely something to look into. One of my very good friends is a director of Bay Area Community Resources and they are all over Oakland, Richmond, Mount Diablo Unified, Antioch, Pittsburgh. And they have after school program sites where they actually have people that come in and help all of the students with whatever they need in homework or whatever academics, they have enriching programs. I know we don't have the funding, but maybe we can, maybe the parents can organize and start some sort of sourcing fundraising program to get these programs into our schools because not everybody can afford Kumon. Not everybody can drive their kid to DVC in the morning and pick them up when the class is out. And I know my kids are going to be okay because I'm here advocating for them, but what about all the other kids whose parents don't know where to start, whose parents don't know what to do in order to help them?
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will end the time, end the public hearing. And we will reconvene our regular board meeting. This begin, or this is our informational item and begins the period of comment, which I think CJ has already addressed. And we will see this back on our next agenda unless there's any other additional questions for the board. Okay. Fifteen point ten is public hearing and review of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. Also an information item presented by Helen Rossi.
Thanks, David. So tonight I'm here to present the proposed budget for the nineteen twenty school year. The budget that I'm presenting is based on the governor's May revise to his January budget and the information we received at the end of, of May. The California State budget is approved by June fifteenth, is it June fifteenth? It's July fifteenth. Yep, you know, I had a week off and that just threw me for a loop, but everything's gone since then. If necessary, what will happen is depending on the outcome of the governor's final budget, I, if there are changes that are significant, then what will happen is I will come up with a forty five day revise and present that to the board with the new information. I wanted to just quickly review the budget cycle. We are here, well, we are here, wherever this is, it's not with us, in June at the budget and LCAP adoption. What happens from here is our books are still open, meaning we continue to pay on our POs and pay our bills and receive invoices that we've, from different companies throughout the year, we continue to receive those through June thirtieth, probably for the next two weeks. And then I close it off the middle of July because there's always the late ones that come in a little bit late. But the books are actually closed on June thirtieth. And we tally up all those numbers and figure out what we actually spent, give it all to the auditor and the auditor makes sure that we've done our job correctly. Then what happens is we start the cycle all over again, based upon what the budget you see here tonight. In the beginning of November, or the, actually, I think it's November fifteenth, I will present to you. to you after November 15th what our spending looks like from July 1st to October 31st. And that'll kind of give us an idea if we're spending too much in one area or not enough in another. We get unexpected expenditures pretty much every day. So things change constantly. There's no, there's no solid ground. It goes like this. From there, after the first interim, we go to the governor's budget in the middle of January, where he tells us what he is predicting to put out for us all the way at the end of the year, or at the middle of the summer. And I use that information, and I come up with the second interim. I take this expenditures all the way through January 31st, and based upon the rates and the predictions from the governor's budget in January, I come up with a, where we currently are right now, and present that to the board in March. Then the May revise comes out, we start to work on the LCAP, we tally up what we've spent and what we're going to do on our new goals and, and actions, and realign our money and create a new budget for the next year. This current budget and the multi-year projections for 2021, and what is up with this, I'm sorry, 2021 and 2122 are based on these projections here. As you notice, the enrollment in 1920 goes from about 4,088, which is lower, it's predicted to be right now projected at 4,088. We're currently, this year, we're at 4,164. So it's projecting a dip, and we're not sure exactly who we're going to get until we open our doors in August. The next year enrollment is projected to go up just a hair and then down a little hair. It's almost, it's, it was flat enough for me where I used the same ADA count straight across the board. Because in, in past years, I've only been doing this for two years, but in the past two years, the predictions have been a little bit low, and they've come out about the same. And I have a slide here to show that to you, to show you that. You can see the COLAs that are, the governor presented in his May revise are listed there, our Consumer Price Index. As I take our expenditures and I move them out the next two years, I multiply them by the Consumer Price Index for, you know, the raise, rising costs. You can see the CalSTRS employer rate. The one I've used in the budget is 18.13, but the proposed buy down from the May revise is 16.7. So here's one place, right here, you can see the proposed buy down straight across the board. This is one place where I hope to, to gain a little extra, you know, not have to make so many cuts because our budget will look a little better, it'll be less expenditures for our, our STIRS costs. I have the PERS rates in there, the lottery stayed the same, routine restricted maintenance is always 3% of all of our expenditures in the proposed budget. And it stays that way from the time we adopt the budget all the way through, even if our expenditures go up or down, it stays at that one number right from the beginning. And that, that routine restricted maintenance takes care of all the repairs in the trees and, and fixing things, as well as because we no longer have the deferred maintenance going in, we've managed to be able to bank a little bit of the, the routine repair and maintenance and a little from the leftover Measure K to take care of our summer projects this summer. Step and column is in here, and of course, your employment benefits. Here's our enrollment history and projection, and as you can see, we're this year at 4164 right here, which was an increase of 16 over last year, but it's projected to go down 76 by next year, up 13 and down 2. So I'm hoping this doesn't ring true and that people are, are moving in. I noticed a lot of houses for sale in my neighborhood, so I'm hoping they move in with a lot of kids. So now what I do is I take a look at the revenue that is projected to come in from the LCFF calculator, based upon the governor's information. And we have two types of income. We have restricted income and unrestricted income. The restrict, restricted income is money that we receive from the federal government, the state, and local sources that has to be spent on specific things. We can't spend it on anything else. The unrestricted money is money that we use for everything else. And both categories have salaries and benefits in them, both categories have books and supplies and, and all of your expenditures categories are the same. So our total revenue for the 1920, right now, as projected with our current COLA, is $45,154,000, give or take. So then I look at that, I take a look at the expenditures as I built the budget. And when I was building the budget, I was taking care to measure how much we've spent so far this year and what that, where I could cut for next year. In certain areas where I saw, where you had a little excess, I kind of trimmed it off a little bit, and how we could use our money a little bit differently, and came up with the following expenditure list, which isn't going to mean much to you until I show it to you against the estimated actuals, what we actually spent. So one thing I do want to point out is that our revenues are predicted at 45.1 million, and our expenditures are 46.7. So we're deficit spending still, but you'll see in a future slide, not as much as we have in the past. So little by little, if we could get that revenue up, get our ADA up, we could actually solve this deficit spending problem. So we have to work on getting our kids to school every day and on time so that we can fix that, that glitch that we have this year. This is the estimated actuals from 1819. These numbers will not end up being the same when I present the unaudited actuals because we're still paying bills. And unlike, well, maybe typical of, of government agencies, they don't always send us our money on time, so there's, sometimes it comes in a little bit later. But right now, our estimated actuals are about 45.5 from last year, and our expenditure is here at 47.5. I'm going to quickly flip through here because this is where you can kind of see where we ended up, projected where we ended up, and where we're going. So in our revenues, when we look at the 1819 school year, we brought in approximately 45.5 million. In 1920, we're only projected to bring in 45.1 million. Where, where is that decrease coming from? Even though we got an increase from the state, a small amount, we had a large deficit in our ADA. And remember, your, if your enrollment is 4,100 students and your ADA is 3,926, that means on average, the difference between the two, that's how many kids are not coming to school every day. So we have to work on our incentives and our attendance and our programs to, to get kids to want to come to school more. We have to encourage parents and educate them on what to do if you have a family vacation or a family emergency and you have to take your child out of school. As a parent of, of kids in this system, my whole family's on the East Coast. I've had to take them out of school and take them back east, but there's an independent study option so that they can keep up with their schoolwork and their ADA gets counted. I know there are a lot of parents that do use it, and, and that's good, but if we can encourage more, that would be even better. So when I look at the revenue comparisons here, you can see the difference in the two. Right here, and the federal rev, revenue is about the same. The other state revenue took a big dive here, and that's due mostly in part to our one-time money we received last year for our low-performing student block grant of almost $600,000 that we have, we have it in the bank, we have a plan to spend it, but we're not going to get it again this year. It's a one-time gift that we have to spend within two years to remediate our ones and twos on the S-VAC. Other local revenue, you can see about $100,000 in between $125,000. That's usually, I can't count on the exact number I would get from MEF as a local revenue, so it goes back to zero. And when MEF does their donations, which they so generously do every year, that number will come up again. When I look at our expenditures and our estimated actuals, remember, estimated is the key word there, you can see that our estimated actuals and our budget, the salaries for certificated salaries have gone up just a little bit. And if you remember, last year, we, we did do some natural cutting through six fifths and through of not replacing people when they left, we didn't actually cut certificated teachers. But we do, we had to hire two brand-new positions, two SDC teachers. So we increased special ed teachers by two, we increased home, we, because of the amount of students in home hospital, we increased the Brioni's number to do two things, help more students get a diploma when they're credit deficient, as well as to help with our home hospital load. And we also increased our psychologist hours. So that kind of took over any savings we had there, but there was a definite need, and we need to do, we need to service our students. Classified salaries are about the same, a little bit less, but we did make some cuts there. In the classified salaries, if, I know we had an administrator or confidential supervisor, Mike is retiring, and, and I'm replacing him differently, and we also moved around in the district office level for classified administration, as Alex is sitting right next to me, and saved a little bit on a position there. So you'll see, that's where that comes from. Employee benefits, of course, went up with the increase in STIRS and PERS, but I hope to see this number not needed as much with the governor's, or the governor's pay, buy down, sorry, buy down. Books and supplies is about the same, services and other operating expenses, I managed to bring down some. Capital outlay, this is for when you buy something that's, something that you need, like when somebody steals your trailer and you have to replace it. Well, I'm hoping not to have to replace another trailer this year. Other outgoing is the money for the county office of ed that we pay for our, is that transportation or is that, that for transportation for our special needs students? So you can see that our budget has tried to bring down our, our expenses from four, or 47.5 to 46.7. So we're, we're doing the best we can. These are our other balance funds. These are restricted to what you see in their fund name. They're, they're nice balances here, but we can, as you can see, deferred maintenance, which we use for summer projects, is, it's got nothing. And the cafeteria fund will come out, break even this year at zero. The rest of the money is, aside from this money, which is the holding for your taxes that come out for the bond, so we can pay the bond back, the rest of this money here is all for our, this is our bond, Measure R and Measure K, what's left in there, and these are other construction funds. Fund one. Fund one is our unrestricted, I can't even talk, unrestricted monies from back in the first slide of expenditures and revenues. So all in all, when you take a look at the estimated actuals, we were actually spent $2 million over what we, over what we brought in, and we're down to 1.6, which doesn't look that good, but it is a lot better than $2 million. Try to be positive. Our beginning fund balance here should end up at the end of the adopted balance, a little bit more than this, once we find out what our actuals are here. I'm hoping to see this be a lot larger. And then our required reserve is here to meet the third year out. But remember, the only way we can meet the third year out is to make $1.4 million in cuts here and an additional 400 as of today's numbers. That would leave us a third year out of 3.07. But there are a lot of things that are going to impact these numbers between now and September. So I just, I just want to make sure that that's really clear. So. Questions?
More questions?
I'm, I'm just always really curious about those projections on enrollment. Where do those come from?
What happens is you look for trends. I have a big spreadsheet, and it goes back many years, somebody started it way before me. And you work on a diagonal, historically, from second to third grade, is your number the same, or do you usually lose one or two or five or six? And you do that same projection from each grade level all the way across. So that's, that's how it's done. I don't, it's new to me, but that's exactly how it's calculated. It didn't work last year because we ended up with more kids, and I know that, so I'm hoping that we end up with more kids, but that 4088 that's up there, I believe that's what up, I took that right off of Janelle's current enrollment list. I, I ignored what it said there, and I put it right in. That's why I think that there's a big enough jump there between that year and the next year with 76 less. So we'll see what happens. So I think once we, we move on with all our new elementaries and stuff, I think we're going to see an increased want to come to Martinez.
Yeah, I mean, as, and we can continue to encourage some increased development that whatever this region can bear. I mean, we, we're mostly built-out community, but there are pockets of potential growth, and lord knows there's a need for affordable housing, and Martinez still remains, you know, a, a bastion of relatively affordable housing in the Bay Area. So I do my part to boost Martinez and the district especially, so I hope we all do, too.
Any other more questions? So this also is, needs to be opened for a public hearing, so we will close our meeting at this point and open it up, the public hearing on the budgets. Now, do we have any public comments?
I was curious on the drop in attendance in ADA. Is there any theory about why there was such a big drop? I, I noticed in the LCAP report, it was largely a lawsuit.
I, I don't know yet. I haven't, I just got, I haven't had time to look at it. Summer is when I can look at things, so.
Just a comment, I think, on the budget. I think all school districts in the state are in the same boat largely. Unfortunately, all school districts are, are in a silent recession despite the strong economy, largely because of the pension issues at the state level that need to be dealt with, and there's no way around those issues. Actually, I think if you look at the numbers, state funding on education has increased significantly over the years, just the more and more of that money is being sucked away, the, the covered pension liability. So unfortunately, I think that's just the reality, and I think that what we need to, I think what, you know, I think what the school district really needs to do, and which I've said before, is really set really, really thoughtful priorities in terms of making sure its resources are stretched as far as possible while making sure the needs of our most high-need students are met, that they come first. And then beyond that, I think that the budget always needs to prioritize, prioritize to have the largest impact on the largest number of students. I'm not saying that that's not the case already, but I, I think that, hopefully I'm wrong, but I think the reality is until this pension situation is resolved, which won't be for a few more years, tight budgets are just something that's going to be the reality. And I hope the district can look at alternative sources of revenue, such as grant funding through the federal government or through nonprofits, or through these help, these companies, corporations that are making lots and lots of money, give some of that back to our students who are not getting the level of resources in many cases that they should be getting. I think we all agree on that. Thanks.
Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will close our public hearing. We will reconvene our regular board meeting, and if there's any, so any further discussion by the board, seeing none, we will have this item returned to us at our next meeting in two weeks. Okay, fifteen point eleven is review of a new job description. It's facilities support specialist. This is an information item presented by Helen Rossi.
This is the worst week for me. I bring before you tonight a, a new job description for a facility support specialist. In an effort to increase the efficiency and customer service in the area, in the area of facilities management, we're recommending this position, which will combine the more complex support duties of our bond accountant with the more complex duties complex support duties of our bond accountant with the more complex duties reporting and analysis of our current coordinator of maintenance and operations. So in the reorganization of the facilities, so to say, department and the business office, we, we would have this job be, let's say, the middleman of the more complex, we'd have an administrative secretary to handle the ordering and the day-to-day business and the, the simple work order facility issues and data entry. And then we would have our current bond coordinator fifty percent of the time overseeing our bond projects with our GM, of course, who we hired to do the work and overseeing the three maintenance and the two groundsman at the same time. So this is the, the last piece in the puzzle to, in an effort to replace Mike Palowski.
Any board questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, this is an information item that will be back for us in two weeks. Fifteen point two is review of memorandum of understanding between New Leaf Collaborative and Martinez Unified School District. An information item presented by CJ Cammick.
Thank you very much. We do have a representative, representative from the New Leaf Collaborative here with us tonight, Ellen, thank you for being here. Yes, and for still being here. The MOU between the district and the New Leaf Collaborative is not something new, so it's here for information tonight for a renewal for the next school year. I think one piece to highlight is we have been in close communication with the New Leaf Collaborative leadership and talking about the role that that played in terms of PEI dollars and programs related to Vicente Brioni's. And both parties have agreed that the program itself, the, I should rephrase that, the MOU itself is going to be more focused on the community science workshop and the recycling programs and other aspects of the partnership between the district and the New Leaf Collaborative. Vicente and Brioni's are going to be taking a different approach to serving their students in terms of mental health counseling and other support systems that had previously been in place from the New Leaf Collaborative. And part of that discussion and dialogue is just based on a shift in the program and how the direction is going in terms of Vicente and Brioni's students. And it matches up to work a little bit better with a different avenue. So one key difference in the MOU this year is that that part is pulled out, but there is still a need for the MOU because we still have a number of areas where there's a very successful partnership between the New Leaf Collaborative and Martinez Unified School District. And I'm grateful that we are able to maintain those positive relationships and programs.
Great, are there any board questions on this?
Ellen, you've been here, would you like to brag about anything positive over the last year? You've been here all night of dislike, oh my gosh, this is gonna be painful.
Any other board questions, comments?
Just a comment, because we actually had a highlight of the Vicente program at our last Mental Health Services Act Advisory Committee that I sit on. And so I brought with me copies of the papers that the students put together and they put together several sixty, thirty second PSA spots specifically around mental health, about how to cope during the summer, was the one I remember the most. And of course, when we were at the Vicente Brioni's graduation, one of the students was recognized for his work in the psychology club and for going to the state and talking about mental health and education, which is, you know, it's pretty wonderful when our students have the wherewithal in themselves to go up and speak to state-level politicians about things that are important to them. So, yes, it's been a great partnership and we've been very lucky, I'm sorry, Mr. Lazzaro has already left. This is actually an example of funding that we get through the county from the state for our program, for, it's about a hundred and eighty-five thousand total, if I remember correctly, that goes to the Vicente Brioni's students to help them succeed as they have been doing so well, but improve their success rate. And the county, I know, is very proud of the program, as we should be.
Anyone else? No? Any public comment? Well, this was a informational item, I think last year we put this on the consent calendar. Is that okay with everyone? So there you go, we'll put it on the consent calendar when we bring it back to the end of the, for our next meeting. Thank you for coming. And I guess last but not least, fifteen point thirteen is review of resolution number two thousand nineteen dash nine to reduce classified services. This is an information item presented by CJ Cammick.
Thank you, this resolution is before the board tonight as information only. And as is called out, the resolution is specific to two areas. One is a, starting with Martinez Adult School, a twelve-month position shifting to an eleven-month position. In regards to that, we have met with, consulted and conferred with the CSEA leadership in regards to that position change, that process has been completed. The other position is related specifically to food services. And as the board may recall, that is the only area of classified employees that is not subject to the same process and protocol as the others, because our food service employees in Martinez Unified are the only employees who bid into their position. So every year at the end of the school year, the food service employees come out of their position and they, when they come back in the fall, in August, actually, I think now it's in early July, by seniority, all the food service employees bid into their positions for the next year. So this resolution is here for you tonight for information only, covering the reduction based on meal counts and food service at La Suntis and then a reduction which has been discussed and reviewed and completed with CSEA leadership related to an adult ed secretary.
Board questions?
No, CJ preempted my questions by affirming that meet and confer has been concluded. Thank you.
I'll open it up for public comment, public comment? All right, seeing none, that ends this portion of the meeting on action and information. Sixteen additional comments from the public are not necessary as we didn't go over time initially. I apologize earlier, I was just so excited to get to this agenda that I forgot to ask the board members if they have any acknowledgements, announcements and reports. And, and so lump that back into number seventeen, if please feel free to do that, as well as future agenda items. I'll just, I'll, I'll go first, because I know it's been a long meeting and I'm going to keep it short, because I, I'll let other people, we've had a great, great week of graduations and I'm going to let other people expand on that. But I, I did just want to go over the board, we, we don't have any meetings in July, which is why we stacked this one pretty thick, as well as our next one. But I also just wanted to thank and can thank our staff throughout the district for putting in a really wonderful year, thank our students and their parents who are supporting them. And for, there, there's going to be many people working very hard this summer on getting some projects and getting, keeping this district going. And then personally, I wanted to congratulate Fatima on another year, you've spent quite a bit of time with us in our boardroom. Thank you for your hard work here and we wish you a wonderful summer and I look forward to working with you next year. Jeremy, how about you?
I wanted to thank all the staff for the presentations this evening. I particularly enjoyed the MJS presentation and look forward to how that evolves and Principal Cusack's implementation of those programs and protocols. I did get to go to a number of the graduations this past week and I will say I enjoyed my time at all of those graduations. I did particularly enjoy Martinez Adult Graduation and Vicente Brioni's Graduation. I really enjoyed spending time and hearing some of those stories from those students.
Ethan?
I'm sorry that I couldn't attend all of the graduations last week. I, without going into too much detail, was suffering from a pretty terrible virus and luckily I was able to pull it together to make it to the high school graduation, which I think I told Jeremy when he joined the board is one of my highlights of, of this job. There's something so satisfying about being able to hand over, well, albeit the case for the diploma, but ceremonially handing over the diploma to our recent graduates and there's, there's nothing that can quite describe that. There's, there's a sense of accomplishment and being able to have just a small part in that is truly an honor and a blessing. I want to welcome Jeremy to the board, I think this is your, your first full meeting or at least first full one that I've been able to attend with you. This, the, this does count as four or five meetings, although our, our stipend doesn't cover that, but welcome to the team, it's really great to have you. You know, I, I want to touch on something, long before I joined this board, there have been discussions about safety for our students, for staff and for our school community. And simply because a dedicated group of people have been bringing an issue to our attention does not mean that we have never dealt with it before or have not discussed it. And the, the assertion that somehow we wouldn't be having ongoing rigorous, difficult conversations about school site safety, because people told us to do it, is frankly false. And I find that to be a very misleading statement and I, I feel the need to address that. We have it up here on our core values at the very top, it's been there since I joined this board, it's going to remain there long after I'm gone. And I think that everybody who works for Martinez and Vicente School District puts our student safety absolutely first. And to, to say otherwise, I take umbrage with. So that said, I want to congratulate all of our graduates. Fatima, thank you so much for spending this year with us, we look forward to another year. And I'm, I'm glad you're here, thank you.
John? Kathy?
Yeah, I, I second your comments, Jonathan, thank you. I've been on this board for nineteen years now and we've been talking about student safety probably since I started on the board. It depends on what you're talking about, but we were at one point talking about totally imposing the high school and, you know, we have changed how we've discussed it, but the fact remains, we have discussed it for that whole time. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to let people know about. I know I talked to you about psych emergency services, which is abysmal over at the hospital and the leadership of some of the group of us who are advocates for children have actually started to get some action happening. There is change being implemented at psych emergency services specifically around how kids are treated there, because currently it's a terrible situation for kids, they cannot be admitted because they're not supposed to stay longer than twenty-three hours, but because sometimes their behavior is so difficult, they cannot be placed at another psychiatric hospital. So we have had, unfortunately, had kids stay there as long as three or four months. So they don't get good service there, they don't have good privacy. We've had a young lady come and speak to us, actually a former student of ours who has moved on to a different school district, who talked about her experiences there. That's my long introduction to, we are actually going to have a meeting with county administration about psych emergency services. That is a public meeting and it will be at the NAMI, which is the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, at their offices at twenty-one fifty-one Dalvio Street, Suite Vias and Victor, which is on the first floor tomorrow from three o'clock until five o'clock and anyone is invited, if you have any interest in this sort of a thing. It would be helpful to have other people there, other than those of us who've been saying this for quite a while, because it is, it's an important piece in the continuum of services that we provide to our kids, from, you know, virtually not needing any services to needing to actually be hospitalized because they've had a significant issue and everything in between. So if you have the inclination and the time, I would greatly appreciate your attendance. I'm going to do my best to be there. And then I also have associated with housing, and I'll leave them here with you guys, then I'll pass them around. But there is a forum on housing, the Mental Health Services Act is, brings in about forty million dollars to the county and it is for specific programs and services. The planning meetings for the next three-year plan start next month. So on Thursday, July the eighteenth, there is going to be supportive housing community forum and that will be at the Contra Costa College, which is over in San Pablo. There will be one there, there'll be one in San Ramon that will address suicide prevention and one in East County that will address zero to five issues associated with mental health, which I know some people don't think, that doesn't have mental health issues, but fortunately do. Last but not least, then I have a, a bit of information and I'll also leave here about a new nonprofit that is being started by a person who comes to our mental health meetings. And just in case you want to be a part of the board, I'm not promoting the agency itself, but it's an opportunity to discuss mental health and other services. And last, but certainly not least, I wanted to recognize Tom Dopp, this Tom's last meeting and understand it. And we will miss you a whole lot. Nice presentation was a really good example of why we'll miss you. Wish you very well. Take care of everything and do what you have done. Now I'm done. Oh, I went, no, I'm sorry, I do want to apologize also, because I wasn't able to make all of the graduations. I made it to the Vicente Brioni's and that did me in. I was not able to walk very well, so I chose not to attempt to walk for the, both the high school and the junior high. But I was there in thought and spirit and I could hear every word at my house, so thank you.
Fatima?
I just want to congratulate all the students that graduated or moving on to a high level of schooling. And then I just want to thank Mr. Dopp, since you were my past principal and mentor basically on this board for this year. Yeah, if you ever saw us whispering, he was always helping me with anything I was unsure of or any questions I've had. And even like, I enjoyed those conversations and even the ones where we just talked about stuff outside of this, it was an honor working with you. We'll all miss you, I know I'll miss you, so thank you.
All right, so I will let you close this out.
Thanks so much. The business side is, if I could, is it okay with the board? We talked about the MOU going on the consent calendar, looking at the future agenda being likely another long agenda. Would we also like to consider the job description moving to the consent calendar in the next meeting? I'll, I'll do that. The other piece, I just want to share my, my congratulations with the staff and the students on a great year. I know we've talked about it, so I won't go over it over, over and over again, but I, I think it's hard to quantify how much work our teachers and our classified staff put in on behalf of our students each day over the course of a full year. It's, it's an astronomical task that they, that they accomplish. I appreciate people's taking the time to recognize, Tom, that was in my notes as well. Tom, you've been a great colleague of mine. I am grateful that you will remain a great friend of mine and I wish you and your family the very best of luck and it will be hard to measure for you or for any of us, the contributions that you've made to Alhambra High School or the youth in Martinez as a whole. And I would also, though she's not here, like to thank Crystal Castaneda, Crystal's moving on to be a director in Oakley. She spent a lot of time, both as a teacher and as an administrator, at La Suntis Elementary School and we wish her the very best of luck in her venture as a director. And as those people transition out, we have new people transitioning in and why we will miss the ones leaving, we're excited for the talent and capacity that's coming to join Martinez Unified as it continues to be a place that people want to come and work. And I am grateful to serve as the superintendent for this community and this board.
Great, with that, we will adjourn our meeting, see you in two weeks. Great, with that, we will adjourn our meeting, see you in two weeks.